Okay, evening. Again, if you're coming to the Citewood Planning Board, there is a public vote by means. Being held in the select board here, here at Town Hall. Uh, there is a quote of your agenda if you're of seven.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
First up the agenda is continued public hearing and major site plan review. You'll install water permit. Seven nine nine and eight oh three countryway. We just despise.
In accordance with that general law, chapter forty A, sections nine and eleven, and Citewood zoning bylaws, section five eighty Village Center and Neighborhood District, section seven fifty design review, section seven sixty partner requirements, section seven seventy site plan review, and nine forty referral. And section three two oh five oh stormwater of the general bylaws and its regulations, the planning board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, April twenty four, twenty twenty five at six thirty P M. In the select board hearing room, Citewood Town Hall, six hundred Chief Justice Bushing Highway, Citewood. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by for a major site plan review in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, North Citewood Village District, North Citewood Village Outer District, V C N N S V O B, and special permit for tandem parking regarding the construction of two multifamily buildings with five bedrooms, bedroom units each, and twenty five parking spaces consisting of ten in garages, ten tandem outside the garages, and five additional parking space, site utilities and site amenities at the project location of seven ninety nine countryway. The applicant is John McGill and the property is owned by Option C Properties, L L C. The property is shown on assessors' maps as part of code dash two dash thirty four and thirty five. Plans are available for you in the planning office, town hall, et cetera, et cetera. The site is being reviewed jointly with eight oh three countryway, which has also applied for major site plan review in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, North Citewood Village District, North Citewood Village Outer Village District, V C N N S V O B, and special permit for tandem parking regarding the construction of one multifamily building with five two-bedroom units and ten parking spaces, five in garages and five tandem outside the garages. Site utilities and site amenities, stormwater permit after section three two oh five oh of the general bylaws will also be required. The applicant for eight oh three is John McGill and the owner is Anne McGill, L L C. The property is shown on assess- as assessors parcel twelve dash two dash thirty six, eight oh three countryway is a continued public hearing and now includes a special permit, the tandem parking, and a stormwater permit.
Alright, so what we had to do, you guys remember eight oh three was filed separate and seven ninety nine. So this is the first public hearing for seven ninety nine. We re-advertised for eight oh three to include the stormwater permit and the tandem parking because they aren't in the first thing. So now that the two voters who weren't notified and consented that this not going to issue, we can go ahead with the public hearing. The board has to move over here if the audience can't see the board. We don't. Yeah.
So we good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Want to start, isn't McGill there?
Yeah, sir. Uh, my name is John McGill. I'm the applicant. Uh, we are looking to, um, the reason we're combining the two for permitting purposes is because we have some shared, um, it enabled us by sharing some of the stormwater and the area around the building with the other property next door, which, um, we're able to shift the building into better position and have it look a little better and still, instead of trying to jam them all on their own. That was the purpose of that and thought it'd be easier instead of coming for eight oh three and going right after, you know, right after for another. It just makes that so much. So, um, there are fifteen units in total, um, three buildings, five units in each building. And, uh, we've already done food design review. They seem to be happy with the, the design and we've made some changes and, you know, based on their recommendations. Um, I don't know if you've received the letter from the design review yet.
I have.
So, but, um, now we're here for a site line reviewing. Uh, Paul Beaver and Brady Consulting will talk about all the other stuff.
Hey everyone, I'm Paul Beaver and Brady Consulting. Uh, as Don had mentioned, we are here requesting major site line review and special permit as well as stormwater review, um, proposed development at seven ninety nine and eight oh three countryway.
I think there's a, the other building appearing too is eight oh one gonna be in the mail.
Yeah, seven oh, seven ninety nine, eight oh one, eight oh three, just sequential order. There's potentially room to add another number there.
Um, the site consists of two properties, seven ninety nine and eight oh three. Um, there's existing residential dwelling on each property here with paved driveway, gravel driveway, as well as a detached garage in the rear of the property. Uh, there's seven existing trees shown here, uh, three of which are located within countryway layout. Uh, the geography of the site currently exposed from approximately elevation thirty on the top down to elevation eighteen at the street here. There is a wetland associated with the bomb brook across the street. Um, and the two hundred foot riverfront zone does extend out just to the countryway, but doesn't extend onto our site.
Does the site drain up in the river?
Yes, the site drains to the road.
Correct.
So the project is located within the Village Center Neighborhood District, North Citewood Village Outer Village District. Um, the proposed use is, uh, residential use and proposed building type is a multifamily building type, which is allowed within that zoning district. Um, the total area of the site is forty six thousand five hundred eighty one square feet or one point oh seven acres. Fifteen units are allowed per acre and here we're closing three five-unit buildings, which is allowed by Ray. One and a half parking spaces are required, uh, per every two-bedroom unit. These are fifteen two-bedroom units, so we're required to have, uh, twenty-three parking spaces. We're proposing fifteen garage parking spaces. Then each garage will have a parking space in front, um, so there's fifteen tandem parking spaces proposed, which we're requesting a special permit for. In addition, there'll be five parking spaces along the rear of the property. So there'd be thirty-five parking spaces total, being a requirement. A bicycle rack is proposed in the rear of the site here with five bar bicycle spaces. Uh, the existing lots and proposed buildings conform to the conventional requirements of section five eighty point nine and seven fifty point six. Access to the site will be granted with two new curb cuts on countryway. Uh, there's a proposed twenty foot wide access drive that will go around buildings one and two and a shared access for, uh, building three shown here. So this is, uh, eight oh three and this would be, I guess eight oh one of them.
Yeah.
So shared access between eight oh three and eight oh one. The project proposes to um, tie in the existing water main on countryway. Proposing a two-inch domestic line and a four-inch fire protection service for each building. Um, we are also going to need to relocate the existing hydrant on countryway of the, uh, shared access drive. Um, the design has been reviewed by the water department and they don't have any issues with the current design. We are proposing to, um, install a new utility pool across the street from the countryway and we will grow underground electric from that utility pool to each building. You're proposing individual septic systems for each building, um, which we submit to the board of health for review and approval. Um, in addition, the town wants us to look at, uh, future sewer connection. So we are proposing a future sewer design that we submit to the sewer department for review as well. Um, each building will have gas service. Uh, we're proposing a dumpster in the rear of the site here, which will be picked up weekly. Per dump, yes, weekly per dump. Um, the proposed drainage system is going to consist of a subsurface infiltration or detention and infiltration systems. Um, we're still working on interesting comments from the reviewed consultants and that's starting to change this time. Um, we submitted a proposed landscape design, which consists of some foundation plantings as well as trees throughout the site. Um, currently the site does consist of seven existing trees, but we're proposing thirty-seven new trees total to replace the seven trees that will be removed. Um, in addition, we are proposing a new sidewalk here along countryway as well. Um, that said, be happy to turn over questions to the board. Or Don hasn't, like, not pushed that.
Okay, Don, you want to tell me about your change in ownership?
Oh, yeah, the, uh, the ownership, um, is not, uh, the one, they changed it over, it's now, uh, I don't know. Andy Gill is correct, it's the other one transitioned to.
So Option C is out of it.
Yeah, Option C.
He's bought Option C.
We bought, yeah, we bought the property from Option C. And so now it's a.
Not both of them.
Just, just, just the two on the left. Yeah, the other one is correct, that's Andy Gill. I'll say.
So it's two different owners, one applicant, so there will be two different permits issued.
But here, you can speak for the other guy.
Yes.
I had a comment, is there any way or any consideration to be made of having this one way in and one way out? Because with the garages, people backing out, two-way traffic, I think it would make a lot more sense to head one way.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that. Um, let me just think. Well, if the people lived on the right with the end of, then that's all the way around. But, um.
Lot that much traffic.
Yeah, I don't.
We don't have that much traffic to, we didn't decide. Yeah. Is there a bit of traffic study on this?
We haven't submitted one, but we've prepared one, we just made seventy-one trips for that.
I guess like a internal traffic, it's just like internal traffic with them developing itself.
Can you tell me how much pavement damage?
I don't have the exact calculation. It's a lot more in previous surface now than it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's an increase in the purpose.
Yes, a question, those extra five spaces.
There are, that doesn't mean use for snow storage as well as against cargo and also an area for relocation deliveries.
There's no increase in volume or velocity going to the street, no, on stormwater. That's been evaluated, right?
I do not have a comment yet from D P W. I've been trying to pull teeth to get comments. I do know that D P W did show me yesterday that they're very concerned about the level spreader sheeting to the sidewalk and causing an icing problem.
Where's the level spread? The level spreader is going to be along the frontage here. Um, but we are also, we reached out to D P W today to look at possible alternatives.
That was a good day, D P W.
So on this, actually, we are the septic systems.
Um, especially the back here. So I dropped them on the side. Yep, that's correct.
I would be concerned about trees on either side of the driveway in terms of site distances.
Well, that's been a comment from the, um, police department, that the trees are in the way of the site distance and they need to be moved back.
So, uh, we did look at that, I wouldn't say they're exactly in the way, site distances. They go around the trucks and we will ship them back, but to allow them more site distances.
You thought a site distance analysis one of the.
Right, we do have one on sheet ten, I believe it is.
I just got you right there. You spent package?
Yes.
I did.
So your version shows it where they were parking the clothes. My version shows them shipping back there a little bit further. The site distance would be taken in three and a half feet off the ground, so you'd be looking underneath the foliage. So let's see this line here, presents your septic system on. So where's the, I should have, this is there. This dash line also shows it from the little bridge over there.
Is this a problem here? It looks like you've got a site, is this one for the left side?
So this is the dash line.
Right. When you say this is only going to be left into this.
So this is the site distance from the latest correction.
Yeah.
You're here taking a right, so leave this dash line of your site distance.
But that looks like it's obstructing.
Right, again, then, the trunks and the trees that you've got here. So you kind of look at the whole, you say three and a half feet off the ground.
But if you were in a van, if you were something bigger.
If you're the truck, it could be higher, but also how far forward does a car have to pull in order to get past the trunks and the lower ranges and all that, that might be.
It'd be fourteen feet past back of the actual.
Road.
Yeah. Um, maybe I'm going to maybe eliminate the trees of the thought, or maybe you have one back here and one over here.
Well, this is a road though, right? In the middle. It's not an access.
No.
This is just. But I think the trees are fine there, it's just right around the entrance is.
Right, it was the site distance, that's why he said, then, you know.
That, that's a tough road right there.
That's a tough road.
And there's a lot of travel on that road.
Yeah.
I mean, I would almost say, you know, take that one out and, you know, over here. But you can't really move it back like that one.
Yeah.
It's not tough. I mean, that also means you have to put in fairly mature trees when you start to, right?
Right.
I have no problem taking out the two trees on either side.
Well, they needed for zoning purposes, I mean.
Are they needed for what?
Zoning purposes.
Oh, I don't know.
I mean, so.
Is this a, don't you have some sort of tree scape, um, rules that would be required?
Yeah, I mean, we do have some trees here, that's why, I mean, it has to be evaluated. I mean, I don't think we could just eliminate the trees. I mean, they have to be repositioned. Repositioned on the side.
Yeah. I mean, it'll probably be nice to have a few trees around the buildings, right?
Right.
It's just that, that's such a busy road in and out there, so it's sure you don't obstruct the view of the way.
I mean, site distance, distance, site distance is supposed to be taken at high level, fifteen feet back. That needs to be shown on the plans and, and et cetera. So, and I mean, if it impacts that, then the tree has to move.
So if it doesn't impact it, like that showed.
Well, the comment from police department, they thought it impacted.
Well, I don't, have they seen the new, they haven't seen this.
This is the new layout and it's just a favorite.
It's not the same as that, I'm not sure it's new, but it's using I mean, the foliage.
So this hasn't been submitted.
No, I mean, just.
Why are we looking at, why are we looking at, we shouldn't be looking at plans that are not just submitted.
So we, the.
Well, I, I think no matter what, we can have addressed
That's right.
Kind of the visibility coming in down the driveway. And I agree with Ann that, you know, there are vehicles that are higher. And this also means somebody has to come in and maintain the height of the lowest branches all the time, right?
That's your HOA dog.
And I mean, I've seen it all the time where they just start to grow out, right?
Well, that would be part of your HOA dog.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Part of my HOA dog, that can turn the trees, so.
Uh, is it possible to change the approach so that the trees are back closer to the to the structure?
I can, I don't mind moving them back, as long as they don't, you know, when they're full grown, they're not brushing up against the building, you know, just.
Yeah.
Figure out the size of mature.
Yeah, but how big do these trees get?
What are they?
I believe they're rednebles, simply as a point.
Yeah, I thought I read them.
I believe they're rednebles, right?
What's the depth from the sidewalk to the building?
Back of the sidewalk to the building?
Yeah.
Roughly twenty-two feet there.
Mention over this, it's twenty-three, eighteen feet.
Yeah, even.
I think pretty. I assume that's, is that the sidewalk edge?
So that goes to the property lot, so it's a little bit, a little bit more to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
You want these.
So you've got twenty-two feet to play with.
Right.
So you put.
Well, that's the distance between the back of the sidewalk and the building, um, but to move the trees back, we only have about forty feet or so.
Well, it's like trees, right? Fifteen and eighteen feet there.
Well, maybe the trees, maybe you have to just pick out a columnar tree for, for those, for those locations. I mean, there's.
Switching trees to different one that's.
Right, switch it to a columnar tree. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a columnar tree.
Yeah. Narrow.
Uh, but it's still going to have a trunk.
Yeah.
In other words, it's not going to be like a truck.
Right, but it's going to be something that grows. The trunk, if, so if we move that and then the tree itself will be more narrow, so it shouldn't be, it shouldn't impact.
Spread.
It shouldn't have the spread and it shouldn't impact the building.
Makes sense, I guess, movements.
No.
No?
Absolutely not.
Oh, like narrow on the bottom.
Right, you know, the one, these need to be like a shade tree.
Right, right.
Uh, uh, I mean, you can get columnar rednebles, you can get columnar, um. You can get a variety of columnar trees.
Okay.
So your, your sight line analysis is the stop line the edge of the sight line?
So your eye line is going to be fourteen feet back from the edge of the um, access road or pavement, or stop line.
Is that, is that side? Or are they crossing over the sidewalk to turn?
Maybe crossing over the sidewalk to turn.
So they'll be sitting in the sidewalk looking.
So if you extend this out here, this is your sidewalk line, this is your eye line in the driver's seat, or actually over here. But this would be the front of the car. Should be about in the back of the, uh, back of the sidewalk, there it is. Depending on what kind of car you're driving.
And from the base, if you can figure a way to those locations, you know, move those trees back have something with a lower spread to it. Like I think she wrote it better. Like is the sidewalk tie into the existing sidewalk?
This garden, you know, sidewalks on either side.
Is it similar to the sidewalks that ultimately, if they came, kept on there?
Well, we're going to condition that it has to be a standard sidewalk with a vertical granite curb five and a half, you know, the standard D P W section. So if you.
Is that what's in North Citewood?
I.
Same thing?
I don't know, I'd have to go out and measure.
But they would look like simple.
The, the ones in the, the ones by the train station, I believe are all concrete. So.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about train station, but, yeah. So that, that's a hot, hot sidewalk and, and no sidewalk over there, is that what that is?
Right, so do you double it in front of the body?
Right, I think the stand is.
In front of the bodies.
Yeah.
That's very classic.
It would be nice just to have at least sidewalk here.
A sidewalk in front of the parking lot is similar to the other sidewalks. It has the brick, you know, and it has the cement. Is that what you would do in front of your building?
There would be cement, but if we're required to granite curb, we do granite curb, or we're required to do.
But what about with laying bricks to have it flow?
There's no other, that's just over by the stores.
No.
And I don't, that's not.
I disagree, I think, I'll go and look at it tomorrow. I believe that there is brick in the sidewalk in front of the parking lot that goes to the, um.
I don't, we don't have plans to do brick. The plan should do, the plan was to do concrete, I mean, that's, it's, it's, because then everybody we'd be the only brick sidewalk there, I mean, in that area. I, I don't know, I'll try, I'll do a drive-by at the M B T A station and tomorrow I'll see. But, um, I think the intention was to do just the concrete with the granite curb, um.
Would you consider extending it to the driveway of, um, wheel farm?
No.
It's up only about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty more feet.
Looks a lot.
Um, I don't know what the cost for that would be, I mean.
Alright, that was in the police department common, comments.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to, I mean, a hundred and, hundred and fifty feet, I mean, granite, granite curbing is not inexpensive. Um, what are they, four feet? Four feet wide, that's.
Um.
Five feet.
Do you granite curb?
No, 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 the, this, this. So, it's like seven hundred and fifty square feet.
John, you're not?
If I see, it's, I, I, I looked at it when I did the sidewalk, so what you have is you got brick and, and concrete in front of the tea parking lot. When you come across from the tea parking lot, there's a stretch that's just concrete.
In front of.
No, I'm saying on the same side, on the same side. There's like a little strip that's just concrete. And then there's the dri- the driveway to Lincoln Park, I think it is. And then you have one house lot width of no sidewalk. If this sidewalk in front of this property goes there, um, obviously it would make sense to connect the, the, the. I mean, it's not like it's a huge distance, I know what cost, but, uh, but that would be, we'd have at least some blocks to go from.
It looks like, you know, bricks alone is the actual sidewalk, it's not in the interest.
Yeah, the sidewalk is almost concrete, there's a brick strip, there's a granite curb. Bricks strip about a foot and a half wide, right? Concrete with the sidewalk for the rest of it. And then this all on whatever sticks, the light sticks to the mud.
I've donated several times to a sidewalk fund, I'd be happy to take some of that money back and do that hundred and fifty feet. For my other parts.
That's a different section of the town.
That's a different section of town, I mean, so what if, what if the board didn't condition any other additional monetary donation? Um which that they're doing on the other project in North Situate, would you consider extending sidewalk down to Wheel Park?
So, question. If, what would be, why would I, if I'm not looking for any density, I'm not looking for a bonus, I'm not looking for. It's an asset right, what monetary, why would someone be looking for monetary donation to the town? I understand on other project where I look for special permits and other things, but this one is, I'm not looking for, I'm not trying to do a 40B here, this is, I'm not trying to change the units, I'm just.
The other project is a buy right project too, it's it's in the back of trying to move. People who are going to be living in these units safely to uh to the train station and to the downtown area.
Right, I'm moving them safely off my property. I mean, it's it's, I mean, I. Like, there's a, I don't mind doing some things, but now I'm being asked for, you know, essentially being asked for money for. Something that I have a right to do. So I'm just, I'm not saying no, I haven't even looked at the the cost um of the sidewalk and I don't know if it's ten dollars or ten thousand dollars and. You know, I I'm, I look into it and just get an idea of what, how, an actual wheel out the distance. I'm assuming whoever lives in the houses that they'll, I, you know, you'd be allowed to do that? I don't know, and that's another question, like if someone lives in the house next door that you wanna connect it, how do I?
You're in the right way.
You're in the right way.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
So if there's other thing I have to look at is, are, do they have sprinklers, do they have, you know, is there, what's in that area that I would have additional cost, so um.
Would we take it on our investment?
Yeah, I I'll look at it, I'll look at it for the next meeting, I'll I'll get an idea before the next meeting.
Of course, because it it's really, it's about connections, and I have this thing about connections. And now I know that it's somewhat ominous and maybe you're feeling that we're extorting money from you, but that's not the point. The point is to make this cohesive, to make this look deliberate.
I and I I told it, you know, I I agree with you, um but there, it is kinda funny that I've given twenty-five thousand dollars from the last project to the sidewalk fund.
This is.
And now we're asking for a sidewalk, but I can't use that money or that sidewalk fund to extend a sidewalk on property that I don't know. So if, that was just the twenty-five for the last project, not the other one, so.
It's always a catch twenty-two, I do.
But, um so.
Something to, well.
Yeah, but I will look into it, you know, I've worked with you guys in the past, I, you know, we both worked it out, so I'll take a look at this.
You have always been, and then always.
So we'll we'll try to keep to do that.
Oh, I'm sure.
So, so, uh okay, I'll look at that from that.
You need to see your road permit as well, you know that, right? So you know that?
Yes, it's correct.
And we have not advertised, we're seeing road here.
And you know something, I know that people who are on the far end of a one-way would be upset because they have the most old power to go around. But I just think from a safety standpoint, one-way. I want you to.
You want you want people up there.
But the other thing is if people are out there in the back, then you just have more traffic, like if there's kids out in the back, you got a lot of traffic going around there.
Yeah, and not if it's one-way.
No, because you're leaving the one side going.
The ceiling is better just to have a shorter route, yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta make the shortest route to get up.
Because then you're here and you gotta go all the way around, I can, I'm in a, I, my building, there's a back parking lot, and you go out late in the afternoon and there's not a lot of cars. You're never thinking someone's flying out from the back parking lot and they always are.
Yeah.
I don't know how I enforce that either.
Yeah, you can't.
I mean, you can put up a sign, but you know, the person who lives in those front units thinks it's gonna pour right down.
Yeah. As long as it works for the traffic, does it light?
As long as it's wide enough.
Yeah, we should just. Keep it that way.
Can you tell me exactly how high the buildings really are?
Uh. Right there. Um yeah, so. See. Say thirty. I know my glasses, I was gonna say thirty. Yeah, so thirty-nine feet, nine inches, yeah, to the midpoint of the roof. No, that's, that's uh. Yeah, from right, yeah, from. Come from the average finish grade.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah. The mass size forty feet. But there's a step back, there's certain height requirements for hot fire law through the street, through the place street.
In this, in these buildings, that was very true, it's still that.
And we went through with um the building inspector, we had a meeting with him over the height and the design um department, and they all agreed that we need the. The height requirement.
We will agree to this, okay, um.
Well, why don't we hear from John now?
That's good stuff.
That's all against the public comment.
Okay, um so some of the stuff that's in my list you've already mentioned, it's in, it is in an scenic roadway. And there would be street trees removed, so they are gonna need a scenic road permit. There's two waivers listed regarding basically parking in build two zone.
My glasses off.
Yeah, it's not that. If that probably gonna get up to this part. That's beginning. So. This parking space and this parking space are in build two zone, uh and this, so there's three in the man. Uh so those are the two waivers requested, um some of my comments, I think uh that the existing conditions plan should just not have the overlay of a photo because it makes it hard to see anything. Photo's nice on a cover sheet to see what's there, but after that, I don't think we want it, it just makes it hard to understand the plans, um. And some of the stuff presented tonight wasn't in the letter I, the information that I reviewed, so there weren't sightlines on the plans that I reviewed, I think that they should be on the landscape plan as well, there's a lot of discussion on that. Um so this is the lot line, so this is one, and this is another, and it, there's obviously a lot of shared features. How much of the requirements under a common drive that you want to consider on this? So it's under five hundred feet, so basically you can say just what's required in the site plan is sufficient, but it's a, it's the board's decision, not mine. I'm just raising it as something for you all to consider, uh what might be necessary for that, there's all sorts of easements and things like that as well. On the plan that I reviewed, not all the utilities were underground, the electric and stuff was overhead, I guess that's getting changed, um. One of my comments with, so this dumpster proposal is here, um you have this fifteen units, there will be Amazon, there's UPS, there's deliveries, trash, sometimes you want tri- track turning analysis and things of that nature. You know, with all of them, it's a bigger project than just the one, uh so there's, you know, three times what this one would have been, or, so those are things to consider, um. The parking, so. Tandem parking is both spaces, it's not just the one behind, right, so you have essentially thirty tandem spaces. And. When you have a space in front of a garage. You don't pull up to the garage like you pull up to a curb or a berm, you wanna leave room, you're not gonna hit your garage door, this is just problems that nobody's gonna do that. Um I have been involved with, as you may know, these types of projects for many years, and. Other traffic engineers have commented on, when you have a garage space. It should be deeper so the the vehicle isn't sticking out. Um there was a project built in Norwell that I'm familiar with, there, where literally the, somebody would have a. Full-size pickup floor door bed, and it's outsticking pathway into the sidewalk or into the road. Um you may want a traffic consultant to look at something like that and see what's reasonable. Your tandem space detail is for two tandem spaces and an open parking lot. And this is overparked, but based on the bylaw as well, so it may not need all of your spaces, that they're looking for some of this for legal. In this case, it would be eighty-three percent tandem and you're only allowed to have any back. Eventually, there's thirty in. So that's something, you know, I would consider, and because of the number, that is more impervious, more whatever, so, um. There'll be lots of easements for all of this stuff, uh that I don't know that if that's submitted, it isn't my job to review it, I just know that you should, you should get it, you should review it. Low impacts designing standards, you know, look at those issues, um I mean, the biggest thing on this, I think, is the impervious area because there's so many parking spaces. Um amenity space typically looked at, uh I don't know, it it's basically I think common yard garden type thing, but I don't know if it's like. Do these people have access to this open space or is it only, do they have this open space, and these people, I I don't, you know, it's too large, how's that all work? Those are issues that, you know, the board should discuss while you're in the middle of these things. Um I think you talked about public realm a little bit, and we talked about the sidewalk, uh. There, there's one affordable unit, and that meets the requirements, you might wanna just look into where it is and what it, how, you know, how that all works out, I know there's a lot of details for that, um. It is, it's been submitted to designer view board as I understand, so uh at some point, there should be some comments from them. Board of health should comment on the plans, uh from the, from the review, with this one, my understanding is that the sewer here will be a low pressure, so they'll have to, so the. This, it'd have to be a pump in front of, you know, the units, a low-pressure pump. And then it would go to a line in the street, it wouldn't be a gravity pipe according to what they said before, I don't know if that's changed. Other parts of town, of of North City might be a gravity pipe, but I don't think they're gonna run gravity here. And the, you know, so the board of health, unless it's been changed, the septic system was like right here, so there we, it wouldn't be set back, so there's a whole bunch of easements and things that would be required. And the board, there was limited data on traffic, it sounds like they're doing a little more, the board should decide whether you want a traffic consultant to look at it. And in this case, give us some of the comments that raise, maybe do. Lighting, signage, those things should be looked at, I don't have much intention on that, um. And I'm not sure where the fire department, DPW and all that is, which, you know, DPW is gonna be, you know, the street opening and all that sort of thing, as well as the drainage, uh. This site, I mean, the other one that I reviewed in North Situate. Different project, different in a lot of ways, but the one thing that's the same is it flows from here to here, just like the other one, um there really is not a lot of place to put the water, uh. Right now. You know, there's a house on this lot, there's a house on this lot, there's basically a big hole in front of this guy that collects all the water, it doesn't, it does, it, but they're pumping it out of the basement into the catch basin of the street. Um and there's a pump running all attached, so the water table's pretty high, um. I would recommend you get some more soil tests underneath these filtration systems, I think that they're too low relative to the water elevations that we do know about in some of the tests, I don't think it works the way it was designed, um. I can go into the details, but I don't know if you want me to, but if I can, if you want, but there's a whole bunch, I gave a list of, shortlist, I know that my letters are a little bit. Of a problem to read from these people, they don't know I'm attacking, right? But but, you know, I've cut down the details a little bit, I mean, they need to consider the low area around seven ninety, you need more soil tasks. There's um the systems that are proposed, so there's an underground system essentially up here, and I know it's all being changed, but I can only comment on what was submitted and what you have in front of you from what that's been, it was. The sort of a line system here and here, it would be detention, so it's an underground chamber system wrapped in like a pool line. So in other words, groundwater can't get in, and the water that comes out. Has to get out through an opening, in the case of this one, I think the opening's one inch, I'm not gonna ever recommend something that's one, it doesn't take much to follow, which, oh. The other one I think is four inch, which is more reasonable, uh they should also run the time to see how, the 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 model, where you run it, you can set how long it runs for, you can go from. Zero to twenty-four hours, zero to thirty-six, seventy-two, they need to run it so every drop of water comes through either out or into the ground, so we know how long it takes. Um so there is. Uh you know, the whole thing we had before, you're supposed to catch the one inch, and you can't. I mean, you can catch a lot of it, but you can't catch all of it because you're never gonna catch all of the driveway coming up, um. Maybe there's some way, but because of the water table and everything else, it's unlikely that you're gonna be able to infiltrate it, you're supposed to do that, so you gotta get as much as you can, um. I disagree with putting a level spread right up the property line draining the street, and for many reasons, one, the icing, the two. Most streets, what you do is you put a subdrain, so you don't have water in the street, get foot and water right in the street, it's bad for the street. So, um you know, again, it makes sense to look into potential to connect, if, I could not tell. Sometimes you can look in the catch basins and see where pipes go, but the one that's here had so much water pumped to it from the foundation and the basement of this, there's full water, you couldn't see it then. Um and across the street, there's a couple, two, one of them I think is up this way, but it goes right straight that way. And then I think there's a couple right about in here somewhere, but you couldn't see the pipes to see where they go. But you know, ultimately, it goes to Brown Brook. Which goes to selfish growing areas, so essentially it drains to a critical area, so you need a higher standard of treatment, and they didn't meet that, you know, so there's a bunch of stuff that we threw down there. This system here is, I think it's like three feet from the foundation, three feet from the property line, I I recommend, there's no real rules on these underground systems, they don't have, they're not something that's. That for the underground detention system, I mean, most people don't build things with a liner because it's expensive, it's costly. That's what they're proposing, I still think you need to, if you ever had to dig it up, three feet through a foundation, three feet from the wall, uh property line with a retaining wall behind it. Would be a real humorous task for someone to deal with, especially if it's a condo, all of a sudden you'll get a massive burden of cost, which doesn't seem fair to me, but that's something that we. Expect you guys to talk about and consider, um. And this project, unlike the smaller one, is big enough. That it would require a stormwater pollution prevention plan that goes through, you know, the EPA's end, um they. I I recommend that that be something that the project gets approved, it gets conditioned, if you get that, to review it and look at all the details, and they can probably put off some of that, but again, a site like this. There's a lot of buildings, there's a lot of pavement, it's all close to the road, where's everybody gonna park, where's the water gonna go, why are you building it when it's all stripped? It's it's complicated because, you know, you have these built, and then there's, you know, there's not really much room in the front, and there's not much place to put the water, you might have to come in. You know, one side, or that, but you know, it all drains this way, it's easier if you have a place that you can kinda put it, but anyway, that's. That's sort of my summary, and if you have any questions, I'll stand here if you have a question, if you don't, I'll sit down. So the, but water systems are detention, they're not infiltration? No, there's both, there's the detention, the catch, so. Way it works, there's catch basin somewhere up in this part of the site, it would go into a detention system, it would then go into an infiltration system. Some of the roofs go directly to the infiltrate, so there's a detention, then infiltration, sort of like that. Catch basins go into the detention system first, then into the infiltration system, some of the roofs go straight to the infiltration system, I think this roof goes to the detention, then infiltration. And then it all connects to this, you know, proposed level spread of all along the whole front, which. Again, I think, yeah, I think they're gonna be looking at all of those things, but those are sort of the issues. Is a lot of spreader, like the overflow or the infiltration? Yeah, yeah, but it's essentially, it's not even a level spreader, according, what they essentially doing is a French drain in reverse, a French drain in reverse. But who knows if it's gonna really work in reverse, because it does no outlet, it just overflows or soaks into the ground right next to the door. But it's intended to address overflow. It's intended to disperse it. The overflow. Yes. Right? Did, well, yeah, it's, it's actually the outlet, it's not a, just an overflow, it is the outlet, water does come out of it in storms. Oh. It's not like, uh, oh, in an emergency, no, it's not an emergency overflow, it's an outlet, it's just intended to spread it all across the whole thing instead of at a point. So how much gets infiltrated versus overflowed? I don't know off the top of my head, they didn't take any credit for that, the other thing that they all. The other thing that they also had, didn't have any compliance with BEP regulations was the way they have a purgus paver thing for this front section, but it didn't meet any of the design factors. It's too close to property lines, it often would work from the soil's perspective, there's a whole bunch of things. This bit to do on the drainage. It's a tough site from a drainage perspective because it does drain directly into the road. Except for this side, which drains into a hole, which is even worse though, because that's just the natural on-site depression.
It all drains to the road, but then it continues pumping groundwater, it sounds like.
Right into the catch basin.
Into the catch basin.
Except where it's leaking into the hole, it's in the front.
Right.
Okay. So we received those comments like two weeks ago ourselves, so we're, those comments are being addressed in the next set of plans that were recently submitted.
Okay, we will wait, we will wait for those. Yeah, I'll, I'll comment. Matt, make one more comment. I'm looking at the plans for your building, the garages and what have you. And what I am seeing is to take, unit four garage, iron on sheet one, building one dash Ava.
This is the door?
This is the floor. First floor, first floor plan.
Okay. Yep.
My concern is, I don't know how deep these garages are in terms of, are they 1850 or whatever?
They're roughly a 22, 20, over there.
Okay, now, unit number four, maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see an entryway on that.
Those are, they, they were just added, so they'll be updated to the plan, that was one of the comments we received. So they are, they updated, in fact, I have a popping car. They added the door, they just, the architect just didn't follow through on their, on their drawings.
Yeah, because just as a.
All the garage door, all the garages have access into their unit, but inside the garage.
Okay.
Yep.
Because Rachel's Way, which is down above the harbor, those garages are deep enough that even one car, one, one other car in the garage.
Uh, yeah, these are, these are, these are one car garage. Yeah, actually, I don't have the room to, to put together.
Do the garages have doors, do they open like?
No, they're, they're garage, they're doors, yeah.
So I'm going to make a comment on the parking, tandem parking. Will you definitely have this grass area in between each house?
Uh, yeah, that was the plan.
Cause maybe the rule would be that we cannot, the car cannot.
Let's see this.
No, stick out farther than the grass area.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and that's something we can put in the bylaws like no water park. But I mean, if we have, the thing is, is, you know, people are going to, even if I added more parking spots along the back and I didn't go for tandem, they're going to pull in their driveway and park in front of the garage, you know? So I might as well just go with tandem and, yeah, but there will be, we can do something like that in the condo documents. So don't require that, doesn't stick out, you know? Yeah.
Either that or a space, you know, painted on, just because it is, I don't mind the tandem.
Or even a line.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Case, a line in front of their, you know, at the end of their driveway.
Because it is true, people get lazy, they don't follow up.
Yeah.
I'm not feeling that myself, but, but do, you don't want some of those big trucks sticking out there.
Yeah.
Is, is, is there a reason you need, you said you needed 23, you had third spaces.
You know, the five spaces.
Goodness.
So there's the, again, they need driveways to get into their garage, they're going to park there. You know, people are going to park there no matter, no matter what. I also realized when I did country, the old country way, there's just, the parking, you know, you just leave as much parking as you can. It's, people come, they, kids get cars, they come and visit Thanksgiving, the parking, you know, you just, it's better to have, I think, more spots and the spots along the back, I mean, now with the amount of, you know, Amazon packages being delivered, you know, there's somewhere, there'll be spots that they'll pull over in the back. You know, so I just think the more parking, the better. I mean, if I had to eliminate a spot or two, I, I could, but I can't eliminate the tandem. Well, I could on some of the units, but I can't get rid of the driveway, so people are still going to park there, you know? It's.
And he's rented for Congress?
Um, haven't decided yet, they're, I haven't decided.
It will look like a perk.
And there are no three bedrooms?
No three bedrooms.
I'm so sorry, what did you say, you said condos, correct?
Yes, yeah, they're, they're, we have, was asked that they were, I think, they were for sale and I don't, I don't know yet.
But is there?
Probably they're, they're, if they're for sale, they're not going to be required to be owned or occupied. So someone could buy this investment property, rent it. So the affordable, the one affordable unit, that's probably going to be a for sale.
You can't rent it for less than 31 days.
You can't rent, correct, yeah, no, these were, yeah, it wouldn't be like an RVMB. Yeah, no, for, we've had, that, that's definitely as a condo. That affects the market for all the units, you know, so it wouldn't be an RVMB.
That's a sensitive subject.
Yeah.
You might want those, you have something in your home, you could rent it for.
Yeah, yeah, we have like six or one year, you know, minimum, but.
Yeah, I was very specific.
Yeah.
And they'll regret that.
Yeah, yeah.
And related to.
Yeah, and they may not be rented, they may all be for sale. I'm just, I don't want to live in brown shit, but I say, yeah, no.
But you're going to have to have, I mean, the building is going to have to be, a building has to be one thing.
Yeah, and they'll all be for sale, but they're not required to be owned or. So.
So that means condos though.
Yeah, they're, they're all condos, yeah, yeah, it's a condo, there'll be condo documents.
They're not a party.
No, 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 no.
The, is there a common agreement between the two property owners for maintenance of all this?
Yeah, it will be, it's, it's, there will be, it's a father and son, they bought them separately. So they're, you know, they'll be, they'll be all shared, you know, easements, little public attorney's for all the easements and everything, some of those.
Yeah, we haven't seen any of that yet, so in the end, it's going to be one, no.
No, it's two, it's always going to be two, two separate, two separate owners.
But you're not going to be able to do that with driveway, is it common?
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a shared driveway at least.
Right, so you're going to need a common driveway kind of agreement or something? Because both properties have to be prepared to maintain it.
Yeah, they'll have an easement, the two properties will have easements for anything they need.
I guess we'll see.
Yeah, we'll have to see that, we haven't seen it yet.
We haven't seen it yet.
Well, my question is, there is still a fair amount of work to do. Is there any public comment from anybody in the room? Hi, could you identify yourself please?
Yeah, my name is William Hale. I have actually, I own the two buildings across the street. I own eight, I have owned eight 16 until this Christmas time. I've owned seven 93, which is the building to the left of this project. I was the owner of eight 09, which is the big unit there with the copper roof. That used to be the headquarters and the satellite offices of my company before the company moved to the town. So I know all these buildings very, very well. What I can say is that those two properties were houses of, one was my, one of my engineers, inspection engineers, and the other one was Rob Dokendorf, who had his own tree and whatever business that he had gone there. But water has always been a problem, draining down from there. The amount of coverage here, it's not, that's impervious, is, is, to be honest with you, it's quite scary because when that water comes across that street, number one, my driveway, both of them, go downhill and, and go toward Bound Brook. And so if water comes out of this thing, it's just going to, it's going to flood a garage. It could, it could flood my tenant's building right now, what is happening, it happens periodically. And this is really very important, this, this water drainage thing has to be addressed in a reasonable way. I mean, there really should be an additional cover under that sidewalk somewhere on that side before sending it over to the other side, because there's no place to put it over there. So what happens? When the water just in one basement, because they had grass up, okay, so it was very impervious to rain. But the basement of the house on the left side would dump the sun pump into the catch basin on their side of the street. That basically runs under the street to the catch basin in front of eight ten countryway, which is my home, where my two tenants are. We spent, we've done a great lengths to make all the buildings on that street look good, okay, and to make these apartments nice. But that water flows from there toward Bound Brook. There are roots that are encroaching into that drainage line further up. Every now and then they send a reamer in there and clear those roots out and then that allows it to go. When those roots block that, and they're probably partially blocking it now, that water comes into the basement of eight 10. I had to raise the floor in there by six inches to put a gravity drain all the way around the basement. I can't stand up in there, I've got tall tenant and a short tenant. The short tenant can barely stand up in there, the tall tenant is walking around like this to get to his lawn. Okay, so that because the rust from that pipe was so nasty, I couldn't have a sun pump last for more than six months. So we've asked the town, the town said that they were going to do it, to put in a new pipe there, to, to reline that pipe. I don't believe they've done it. I don't believe they've done it at all, it's just, they're just waiting for the next problem to happen. So when this stuff leaks into this basement, fortunately, I got a ditch around the outside of the basement, on the outer wall, and then I have a gravity drain and that basically goes off into the wells. So I wish I didn't have to do that, but I did it at my own expense and it's a nightmare. This looks like a nightmare square in terms of drainage, to be honest with you. I think that the amount of, of what they're trying to build in the size of that area is so jammed in there and it's 40 feet tall and it's very close to the street. If the sidewalk is necessary for those people to walk, right, there's one house in between, I used to own that. There's two trees that would have to be cut down, big ones, to go from there to the Lincoln Park driveway. So, and Mike White, I don't know, I'm surprised he's not here, he's the guy that bought it from me. He's the owner of that building and he rents it. If that's still the case, maybe he doesn't rent it anymore, maybe he doesn't own it anymore. But I talked to Dee, she asks me up periodically about questions about the building. So having the sidewalk continue from there, that, in front of that house would be absolutely, I mean, to not do it is crazy. You want, you want these people, but you got the people further down the street now, there's another project going on, still going on, right? Right?
We think so.
Okay, so, but, but it's much bigger than this one, actually. And there's no sidewalk in front of that side either, okay? In front of eight 09, where the stone wall is, I, I got tired, it was my head, it was, I got tired of seeing people falling, trying to avoid cars and walking in essentially rubble because there was no sidewalk. So I just basically, I paved it so that they have at least a place to walk. And so that is somewhat of a sidewalk, I wouldn't call it a legal sidewalk, but it's better than walking down the street. And cars can come around there pretty quick. So if these buildings were a little shorter in terms of how close they are to the street, I think it would allow you to do more stuff. I think it's, it's trying to jam too much and trying to make too much money off of too small space, I would say. Doing the sidewalk, I think, is great, dealing with this drainage, I don't see how it's even possible with this. And everything that's been talked about doesn't even come close to making sense to be sufficient. So it's a very serious issue. And, you know, I would imagine if all my buildings get flooded, you guys are going to be floating lawsuits because you're going to destroy everything that I built and everything that I use. And I don't want that, and I don't think you do either. So I think that really, really needs to be looked at. The idea of building something better than the dump that was across the street for me, I'm all for it. Milking it down to the last inch and having it 40 feet high and really close to the street and really not considering all this runoff from all this parking, I think is highly irresponsible. There would be another way to do it and a better way to do it, but I don't see it here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take all their consideration, anybody else in the room? Is everybody online?
No.
Not for this project. All right, so when we talked at the beginning of the meeting, we said maybe May 22nd, but that, I, I don't think, I think you're going to be better off going for a different date and submitting a new, new set of plans. So we went through the public hearing tonight, that was what we weren't going through. So I could either do June 12th or June 26th.
June 12th.
Binding, binding that, four weeks, plans have to be submitted, four weeks in advance.
Yeah, they'll have, hopefully we'll get them by the end of next year. It's not the reason, so 12 weeks prior to that meeting. And they'll address, you know, the drainage, actually, we're already working on a new design, so.
So I'm going to go June 12th at 6:30. We don't have a minute because we didn't know what was happening. And you have to read two continuances because one for each side.
We need to get you those before the test.
I'll go on. Yes, I will put up the applicant's request to continue public hearing, major site plan administrator review and stormwater permit for a multi-family building in the village center and neighborhood district, North Citywood Village District, Outer Village Sub-District, VCN NSV, O V, until June 12th, 2025, and 6:30 PM, and to continue the time for action filing with the town clerk until August 29th, 2025. And I move to accept for eight 03 countryway, the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for major site plan administrator review of stormwater permit for multi-building, multi-family building in the village center and neighborhood district, North Citywood Village District, Outer Village Sub-District, VCN NSV dash O V, until June 12th, 2025, at 6:30 PM, and to continue the time for action filing with the town clerk until August 29th, 2025. Who's second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Kelly.
All right, thank you. Okay, please?
Yeah, for one huge project. You wanted your project?
I did.
I'm here.
This is your, right?
Thank you.
From there?
Well, that's a drain and tons of water there and somewhere about there, I would say. Which doesn't already, I can't plug that because I got, sent something like, somebody forgot.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is all running down, so. The next one is down the. Sorry, I forgot, so they're all those two walls.
You know what?
Can you guys, if you guys leave that, so, 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 then up the street?
Yes, it runs toward Bound Brook. It, it crosses the hill there, and then from there.
Can you take that outside?
Well, we have a, we have another, we have a public hearing.
We have a continued public hearing for me to sign very good stormwater permits, the seven children on the road, which is the Hallowey School.
He's here, thank you.
He was here from the Hallowey School, everybody looks like that.
Everybody's online.
Everybody's online.
Yep, Ms. Lambert, we're going to need individuals that are involved here to raise their hands because I have no idea.
Yep, Ms. Lambert, we're gonna need individuals that are involved here to raise their hands because I have no idea.
Okay. So who's here?
Tom Rev, the business manager with the schools.
And who else is here for the school?
Tom Hengelsberg is the project manager with Doran Whittier. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person, folks.
Okay.
Brian Biagini unmute, please.
Aye.
And John Lamune.
Hi, guys, just working on my video right now.
Okay, is that your whole team?
Ah, there we go.
Yes, we've got one one for the O P M, one for the designer and one for the town.
Okay.
And we also have Brian and Steve Ventreska are with niche engineering, the civil engineer on the site, on the project.
All right, and Steve Ventreska.
And it looks like Steve wants to be recognized so he can talk if need be.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, tell us what's going on.
All right, um I'm actually not really sure what to do as far as our procedure at this point. We've received the draft uh uh motion and order of conditions. We've had some back and forth uh comment commentary, I guess you'd call it, with with Karen and um we've mostly reached agreement on a couple of things, um on on most of the things. There were a couple of items that were still somewhat unclear and I was wondering if maybe we could walk through those.
Well, I recommend we do it as we go through. I'm not.
Yeah, it's however you guys wanna do it.
Absolutely. Now, we have a draft, we have a draft decision and we did have some commentary back and forth and um I gave my opinions and I consulted with several other people in town and that's how I came up with some of the conditions. Okay. So I would, I think we should go through the thing and if there's a question on a condition, that's when we should. We put stuff address, all right? How do I get here? Yes, yes, everybody, you all have a copy. Okay? Anybody? Right, they were given an electronic copy.
It's the same version.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
It's not, you have a. You have a copy and all the changes are in red. I know. Sorry, but I didn't have, I didn't, people go when, I didn't think anyone would read it, read it today. All right, go ahead, everybody, just stop. I move to make the following findings fact. This is a major site plan administrative review and stormwater permit for seventy two and Lionel Road. One, Cituit Public School, the applicant submitted and duly filed with the town clerk on January sixth, twenty twenty five, an architectural and site plan package entitled Cituit Haveli Elementary School, seventy two and vinyl road, Cituit M A S O two oh six six by Dor and Whittaker dated twelve, twenty 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 four. Appropriative professionals stamped the drawings. The application indicated a project included, sorry, included a project booklet for major development review suspicion. This also included containing the application, architectural graphics, a tree survey, lighting standards, faculty impact study and stormwater report. Several revisions were made to the plans and materials submitted. Two, a special town meeting on October twenty sixth, twenty twenty one voted to appropriate the sum of one point one million for a feasible study, Haveli Elementary School was approved for minutes. A special town meeting on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four voted to appropriate one million, one hundred nineteen million, four hundred thirty three thousand, nine hundred forty three dollars for the new Cushing Haveli School was approved with a two-thirds vote. A vote was taken on May eighteenth, twenty twenty four at the annual county election on May eighteenth, twenty twenty four for a debt exclusion override for the new Cushing Haveli School, which passed by a vote of two thousand one eighty four to one thousand two sixteen. At the special town meeting of November eighteen, twenty twenty four, a vote to transfer the unspent proceeds of the Haveli feasibility study to the new Cushing Haveli School was passed unanimously in favor. The towns supported the funding of the project as evidenced in the votes above. Three, the site consists of a total of twelve point six six acres according to existing conditions, plan and its more paving off and line of road. The site is located in the residence R two zoning district, property parrot loose occupied by the Haveli Elementary School, existing utilities at gravel parking lot by the site entrance and flattery field. According to the applicant, one hundred ten parking spaces exist on the site with fifty four paved bar spaces, eleven unmarked spaces regularly used by staff and forty five unmarked spaces in the gravel lot at Flannery Field. Five hundred thirty spaces are required by the zoning bylaw for a one hundred six thousand eighty four square foot building at one space for two hundred square feet. One hundred forty seven conventional parking spaces are proposed with the proposed number of staff visitors, A D A, accessible spaces and E B charging spaces. Twenty nine temporary grass paved spaces are proposed on the outside of Bassoon Drive for a site total of one hundred seventy six spaces. The applicant is seeking a waiver to not build the five hundred thirty spaces as they indicate this is an elementary school and the bylaw doesn't differentiate between different grade levels. They also indicate it require a burdensome and costly amount of infrastructure to build and maintain for an elementary school which doesn't have the same parking demand as a high school. The applicant also indicates five hundred thirty spaces cannot fit on the site without other site amenities required for the functioning of an elementary school being displaced. The board's consulting engineer supports the hundred and forty seven proposed parking spaces based on I T E data for elementary schools and peak parking data. He recommends the grass paved spaces are only used as temporary spaces. Five, the applicant is also requesting a waiver to allow a thirty six foot wide driveway instead of the required twenty foot wide driveway to allow for the most efficient turn and movements of traffic during peak times out of the site while providing one lane into the site. A separate twenty two foot wide plus lane is also proposed to separate bus traffic from car traffic. This is allowed as the street frontage is approximately three hundred forty seven feet. As the street frontage exceed two hundred feet, additional driveways are permitted in the ratio on additional entry for two hundred feet of additional mileage. The board's peer reviewed traffic consultant supports the preparation of school buses for general traffic for safety and efficiency with no restrictions on turns of the driveway as the traffic does not support a restriction as there are sufficient gaps in movements to exist. Six, according to the elevations and site plan, the height of the proposed elementary school will be thirty three feet, eight and a half inches at the tallest point of building, the gym room. This is below the maximum limit of bylaw requirement of thirty five feet and meets the height requirements for residential district and also meets the required front, side and rear setbacks for the residential district as condition. The architect indicates that the caravans above the classroom roof are not applicable for the building type calculation. Seven, section seven seventy point six A, site plan approval standard A, protection of adjoining premises against detrimental and offensive methods of utilizing the site. Finding, the property of the Anvil Road has single family residence to the north, south, east and west of the site. The proposed elementary school, which will replace the existing elementary school, which has been in existence since nineteen sixty two, sixty three, will be located toward the east heart of the site, occupying some of the current field. The entry drive comes into the site from Anvil Road along the walk. A town recreation field has existed on the site since two thousand four and will continue to do so. Evergreens, evergreen and deciduous screening and fencing are suitably located to the north, east and west and some existing vegetation provides screening in the southeast. The board opines that these joining premises will be protected as condition against any detrimental or offensive uses of the site and the site plan meets standard review of the Cituit zoning bylaw, section seven seventy point six, paragraph A. Eight, section seven seventy point six B, site plan approval standard B, traffic safety and ease of access at street and highway entrances and exits of driveways. Taking account of traffic blocking rates, site distances and distances between such driveway entrances exist and the nearest existing street or highway intersections at times of peak traffic flow. Finding, the applicant engaged niche, niche engineering to prepare a traffic impact study for Haveli Elementary School. The board through its engineering peer reviewed consultant, Horsey Whitten Group, engaged Vanessa and Associates, A V A I, to evaluate the adequacy and and the adequacy and accuracy of Neech's mythology data findings and conclusions. V A I submitted detailed written comments to the planning board. In response to these comments, the applicant and Neech provided responses. V A I indicated that additional materials were needed in support of the project. The applicant and Neech collected additional data and prepared revised reports where requested and updated the site plans. After further review by V A I, the applicant was determined to adequately address V A I's comments and recommendations with the board's conditions. The board determines that the proposed project as condition provides for traffic safety and ease of access at the street and access driveways in times of peak flow of traffic. It occurs with the identified site line limitations and recommendations offered by the applicant and the town's consulting engineer the proposed project or the intersections within relevant proximity to the proposed project. Bus and car traffic will be separated. A separate bus entrance slash exit is provided to separate cars and buses for the safety of vehicle and pedestrian operations. A thirty six foot wide main access slash egress, the car traffic will be by safety and enhanced traffic flow during peak traffic hours. The two driveways are appropriately spaced. Nine, section seven seventy point six C, site plan approval standard C, safety and adequacy of driveway layout, pedestrian safety, off-street parking and loading sites, minimizing glare from headlights, light intrusion, sufficiency of access for service vehicles such as electricity, gas, fuel, telephone, laundry, rubbish, rubbish removal, water, sewer, fire, police, ambulance or other routine or emergency vehicles. Finding, the number of spaces for the school would be five hundred thirty as required for the zoning bylaw with one space for two hundred square feet required for the one hundred six thousand eighty four square foot building. A waiver is requested to build over one hundred seventy six as the bylaw does not differentiate between grades and levels for school and addition and adding the additional infrastructure, which is not fit on the site with the projected program and the burdensome and possible. The applicant maintains that parking provided should be sufficient for the normal staff and visitors with some temporary overflow parking provided on proposed grass paved on the bus driveway. Planning board finds that proposed parking, while sufficiently under the required amount by zoning, seems reasonable for the site and agrees to grant a waiver, which is permissible on Mass General laws, chapter forty eight, section three. The planning board recommends parking reassessed after one year of operation and if changes are needed, then the applicant should return to the planning board for a discussion. Pedestrian walkways provides sufficient access to slash from Anvil Road and the school. An emergency site circulation plan shows planned hot pathways, fire and emergency apparatus and event overflow spaces. Sufficiency of access for service vehicles, buses, parents, employees and emergency personnel is provided. The landscape screening and walls minimize headlight glare to the extent possible. Service will come from the bus group, thereby minimizing conflict with car traffic. The buyer department has determined that the site design is acceptable. The planning board opines that the site plan meets the standard review of Cituit zoning bylaw, section seven seventy point six C for safety of driveway layout, number of parking spaces, access for service and minimizing headlight glare as condition. Ten, section seven seventy point six D, site plan approval standard D, adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewage, refuse and other waste resulting from the uses committed on the site, safety and adequacy of water supply and distribution and firefighting facilities on site. Finding, the site will be serviced by town sewer. The D P W sewer division has commented on the project and all sewer mains, services and features likely installed in accordance with Cituit sewer rules and regulations. All comments of the sewer division must be met. The dumpster area is provided to the rear of the proposed building. The plans have also been reviewed by D P W water division and their comments have been addressed. The fire department has been working with the project team and is on staying paid with them. The planning board opines that the site plan meets the standard of review of Cituit zoning bylaw, section seven seven point six D for adequacy of methods of disposal, adequacy of water supply and firefighting facilities on site. Eleven, section seven seventy point six E, site plan approval standard E, adequacy of service and stormwater drainage and snow meldoff within and from the site, including but not limited to all walkways, driveways, buildings, parking and loading areas. Finding, the site plan and stormwater report were reviewed by the board's consulting engineer, Janet Bernado, P E of Horsey Whitten Group. The plans were partially modified in response to the comments. It is anticipated there will be no increase in rate of blocking of runoff of the proposed site and water quality standards. Horsey Whitten did not initially recommend infiltration of root water up in the school building. Horsey Whitten opines that the applicant has documented the constraints on the site and why the location of the proposed infiltration system is the only viable alternative. Horsey Whitten notes the applicant's calculations associated with the system are reasonable. The site is not in the water resource protection district. Stormwater management is met and water quality will be improved by reducing total suspended solids, T S S, by at least eighty percent as required by the zoning bylaw. Standards for the D E P stormwater management handbook have been met. Several snow storage areas have been shown on site. Snow storage appears adequate. The proposed drainage systems include deep sum catch bases, subsurface infiltration detention systems, a bio retention basin, water quality structures, stormwater outfalls with level spreaders and the gravel wetlands. These stormwater practices will provide pretreatment of runoff and capture of oils and sediments. A review of the stormwater management system by the planning board's consulting engineer and a limited approval of the site plan eliminates the requirement for a separate stormwater permit under the stormwater general bylaw, its regulations or any work that conforms to the plans. The application indicates that the drainage system can be expected to result in post-development runoff characteristics, including peak flow, floodwater runoff and water quality of runoff to be equal or less than pre-development conditions. The site plan meets the standard of Cituit zoning bylaw, section seven seventy point six E for adequacy of stormwater management. Well, section seven seventy point six F, site plan approval standard F. If the site is located with the water resource protection district, the. If the site is located within the Water Resource Protection District, the adequacy of provisions made protect against toxic or hazardous material or oil discharge or loss resulting from erosion, accidental damage, spillage or vandalism from measures such as spill control provisions in the vicinity of chemical or fuel delivery points, secured storage areas toxic or hazardous materials or oil and indoor storage provisions, rotatable or dissolvable materials. Finding, the site is not located in the Water Resource Protection District. Thirteen, Section seven seventy point six point G, Site Plan Approval Standard G. Minimizing the volume of cut and fill, the number of trees of six-inch caliber or greater to the life of stone walls removed, soil erosion and destruction of other natural features. Finding, the proposed rating on the site is reflective of fill being brought into the site to obtain the desired finished floor elevation with utility systems elevated high groundwater. The applicant indicates the project has avoided proposing new plants that are identified as invasive. However, not all invasive tree species on site are being removed. All invasive and noxious species within a limit of work are being removed from the north and northeast property lines and replaced with native tree and shrub areas enhancing the adjacent wetland resource areas. An intermixed stand of native and invasive tree species along southeast and southern property lines is being retained as it has historically provided an ample visual and privacy buffer to the adjacent residential properties. The invasives largely consist of Norway maples, black cherries, black walnut and American elm. The bittersweet should be removed. It will be visually catastrophic to remove and reestablish the area. The Board finds that a waiver from Section seven fifty-one point three B point seven of the zoning is appropriate so that mature invasive trees which provide screening can remain on the project site. Phasing of the site construction will be provided. The site plan meets the standard of City of Zoning Bylaw Section seven seventy point six G. Fourteen, Section seven seventy point six H, Site Plan Approval Standard H. Minimize the destruction of scenic views for publicly accessible location. Finding, the site plans, the site plan meets the standard of City of Zoning Bylaw Section seven seventy point six H. As screening is provided to the north, east, south and west of the proposed school and parking areas, historic stone walls are being preserved. There are no unique or remarkable natural features or scenic views on the site. Fifteen, Section seven seventy point six point one, Site Plan Approval Standard I. Parking areas shall be adequately buffered and shaded using native vegetation. Parking lots with ten or more spaces will be planted with at least one shade tree for ten spaces of a caliber of at least two and a half inches D V H, which with each tree providing shade to the parking area. Parking areas and visually degrading elements such as dumpsters and loading trucks shall be designed to minimize visual intrusion for public ways and residents from the home or zone areas. In addition, suitable screening of such areas like wood fences and dense native evergreen hedges of five feet of width at time of planting shall be utilized. The use of chain link fences shall be avoided except in industrial areas. Outdoor lighting, including lighting on the exterior of the building or lighting in parking areas shall be arranged to minimize glare and light spillover to naked properties. No outdoor light shall be located more than twenty feet above the ground. Finding, parking areas will be buffered using native and existing species. A waiver from zoning bylaw is appropriate so that mature invasive trees which provide screening can remain on site. Parking areas are shaded with shade trees with a minimum of one shade for ten spaces of a caliber of two and a half minimum. There is a buffer of trees which is supplemented by new planters to screen the loading and service area for the residential properties to the west. There is an existing bucket of trees to the south and southeast between site and the residential properties. Large retaining wall will be between the parking and residential property to the east, minimizing viewing opportunity to the site from the residence. Outdoor lighting is proposed that will be LED down lighting that will be installed twenty feet above the ground and will be ballered lights and down light, canopy lights as well. Lighting will not be lowered to adjacent properties. The requirements of bylaws, bylaws Section seven seventy point six have been substantially met. Section sixteen, Section seven seventy point six point J, Site Plan Approval Standard J. Safe, functional and conveniently located, safe functional and conveniently, convenient pedestrian bicycle and where practical transit access and continuity of the pedestrian and bicycle network within the property and nearby pedestrian and bicycle facilities and trip generators. Finding, the Board finds that there is safe, functional and convenient access on-site walkways post-Haveli Elementary School. There is no transit access to the site. There are seven bicycle racks provided by the front entry. The proposed project connects to a public sidewalk on Anvil Road. The limit of work does not provide for any new off-site pedestrian access to the proposed project. The requirements of the bylaw have been met as condition. The site plan entitled City of Haveli Elementary School, seventy-two Anvil Road, City of Mass. O two O six six, by door and with year dated twelve twenty twenty four with revisions through nine four nine twenty twenty five, ninety percent construction documents dated four seven twenty twenty five, supplemental memorandum through March twenty first twenty twenty five and traffic impact study for Haveli Elementary School by Niche Engineering dated April ninth twenty twenty five meets the requirements of the Town of City of Zoning Bylaw Section seven seventy point six. Site Plan Review Standard Review would be consistent with the reasonable use of the site for the purpose permitted by the regulations of the district in which the land is located. Is it stepping?
Second for discussion.
Karen? Are they the changes that they requested in red? So red, yes?
I got a question.
Okay.
Yeah. Item number four. Think we should add, another that happened indicated that they would make special accommodations in case of large frequent events, including off-site parking or other accommodation that necessary. I think that's what we said we're talking about, to avoid.
The applicant indicated they would make
Special accommodations in the case of large, but in frequently setting as a frequent events, fire, excess parking space, including off-site parking or other accommodation necessary.
All right, so we're going to add that, that sentence in there. That okay? You have a comment?
I, I have no comment, that's, that's fine, that's what we talked about.
Thank you.
There's, there's just a sentence at the end of page four. Very long sentence, I'm not sure how to tie it together. It's very making me feel second weird. It's the end of the sentence right before the, the sentence that starts, starts bus and car traffic will be separated. I'm not quite sure that the end of that previous sentence really is saying, it's a very long sentence. It says, "And the town's consulting engineer, the proposed project or intersections with irrelevant are sending to the proposed project." I just, I couldn't wait.
All right.
I couldn't make that tie together, so it might just be a little
Well, we've, we've already marked that sentence.
Yeah. So that then on page five, sort of reposted way down here, planning board recommends parking be reassessed. Is that a condition, a later condition?
No, I just put it in the side note.
Okay, then, rather than recommend, I think we should say request. Page eleven. End of second sentence or insert.
Oh, wait a minute, page eleven is conditions, runoff.
Oh, that's
We just, that was just finding
Oh, I'm sorry, page seven. Page seven, kind of the second sentence, we should say that, you know, Horsey-Witten did not initially recommend infiltration of roof water on the school building. Horsey-Witten defined that the applicant has documented the constraints on the site and why the location of the infiltration system is the only viable alternative. And I would add something there to the effect that, I think we had this conversation, that the applicant agrees to periodic inspection.
That's in the conditions.
Yeah, it's, it's later.
Well, this is, this is finding fact, so, right, so, I'm just
All right, I'll, I'll say it.
I, I think we should say something about that thing here.
Okay.
You know, the same page where you struck the language in red. I think if I'm not in favor of completely striking that, it doesn't have to read that way, but I think my suggestion is that it reads that the Board notes that the infiltration system under the foundation is unusual and will require diligent inspections and maintenance to prevent failure. I, I just don't like striking it too quickly.
The Board notes the infiltration system under the building is unusual and will require frequent maintenance.
Require diligent inspection and maintenance to prevent failure in the system.
All right, that's going to be added in?
That seems reasonable.
Okay, and then on page eight, we're at the bottom, we use the word catastrophic. I, I mean, pull that down to the detrimental.
Okay. Okay.
Where do we finish? On page ten?
Seven in the middle? On paper?
Bye.
I will approve the site plan for the Haveli Elementary School at seventy-two Anvil Road, subject to the following conditions. One, the site plan entitled City of Haveli Elementary School, seventy-two Anvil Road, City of Mass. O two O six six, by door and with year dated twelve twenty twenty four with revisions through four nine twenty twenty five, ninety percent construction documents stated four seven twenty twenty five, supplemental memorandum through March twenty one twenty twenty five and traffic impact study for Haveli Elementary School by Niche Engineering dated nine, April ninth twenty twenty five is approved except that it may be modified if changes unnecessary to meet the conditions below. Two, six reduced sets of eleven by seventeen prints of the most current plans and PDFs shall be provided to the Planning Board prior to pre-construction conference, distribution to the town departments and to the files. Three, the building shall meet all pertinent requirements of Massachusetts State Building Code. Four, materials and details of construction shall meet all pertinent requirements of the DPW Board of Health, by Department, Observation Commission, Planning Board, Building Department and Commission on Disabilities. Where this site plan administrative review requires approval permitting or licensing from any local state or federal agency, such required approval permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the Town of City of Planning Board's approval of this site plan. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to construction. Five, no new underground irrigation systems shall be allowed to connect to the town water distribution system or any man use municipal water in accordance with the policy made effective by the Board's amendment on October eighth, twenty fourteen and reaverted by the City of Water Commissioners of May twenty sixth, twenty fifteen. And irrigation, all irrigation system installed in accordance with the policy must be supplied by on-site sources of private water suppliers at the expense of the property owner. The existing on-site irrigation system cannot be expanded in ground area from what exists now. Six, the Planning Board agrees to waive the parking from five hundred thirty required spaces, four hundred forty-seven paved provided spaces. While sufficiently under the required amount required by zoning seems reasonable for the site and environment and is permissible under Mass. General laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section three. Seven, the Planning Board agrees to waive the width of the main site driveway twenty-four feet to thirty-six feet as bus and car traffic will be separated. A separate bus entrance exit is provided to separate cars and buses for safety of vehicle and pedestrian operations. A thirty-six-foot wide main access egress for car, for car traffic will provide safety and enhance traffic flow during peak traffic hours. The two driveways are appropriately spaced. The Board agrees that the relocated crosswalk and taper of the driveway will be suitable. Eight, the Board agrees to waive three trees that are to be located in the pedestrian aisle at the front entry. The three trees shall be located on-site under the direction of the town ladder. Nine, the Planning Board agrees to waive removal of invasive species at the south and southeast property areas within the limit of work. All bittersweet must be removed within the limit of work. Ten, additional test pits required within the footprint of S S I S number four to confirm the depth to E S H G W. The additional soil testing shall be done prior to the pre-construction conference so that the school can continue to use the field in its current state. Eleven, the applicant shall obtain the plan endorsement of the Planning Board for the site plan review and stormwater permit within ninety days of the expiration of the field period and this decision becoming final. All conditions shall be inscribed on the plans prior to endorsement. Utilities, parking, traffic and erosion control. Twelve, all sewer force maintenance holes, manhole covers are to be U.S. steel Twelve, all sewer force maintenance holes, manhole covers are to be U S steel, watertight, gasped and bolted down covers. Thirteen, sewer mains, services, and features are to be installed in accordance with Situate Sewer Rules and Regulations. Fourteen, existing sewer connections from the building is to be, is to be demolished, shall be abandoned, and/or kept to prevent any overflow into the remaining portion of the existing lines. Fifteen, external layouts are required of all new sewer lines. Sixteen, coordinate with the Board of Health and Sewer Division on sizing of the grease interceptor. Interceptor, provide flow rate estimate to review sizing of proposed grease interceptor. Grease trap interceptor must have baffled detection and be maintained and up regularly. Seventeen, all sewer gravity manhole covers are to be U S steel, U S F seven six nine ring and covered with inner locking cover and bar. Eighteen, all sewer joints are to be externally wrapped. Nineteen, gravity sewer from the school to street is proposed. Redesign for the pump chambers to be located as close to the school as possible with pressure discharge to the force main. Twenty, coordinate with Sewer Division and DPW Director on sewer alternatives for replacement of the force main in the street. Existing force main transitions from two inches to two and a half inches as it travels toward Tilden Road. Special care and considerations shall be made maintaining reconnected private services along the force main. Twenty-one, Sewer Division shall be notified for inspections of sewer features prior to backfilling. Twenty-two, triplex sewer pump chamber configurations is recommended by the dungeons for the dungeons for the school. Backfill pumps is needed if schools to be used as shelter or other use during storms, situations, or free pipe. Twenty-three, disruption to the existing sewer line shall be avoided in any cross-sections between rain and sewer in cases where cross-section connections are bound, shall be disconnected from the sewer system. Twenty-four, a copy of the super permit and curb cut permit shall be provided to the town planner prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference. Twenty-five, all existing hatch bases within the limit of work shall be equipped with gas traps. Twenty-six, overflows from the subsurface stormwater infiltration systems will discharge into the town drainage system located on Anvil Road. The City DPW shall provide written approval to the town planner that this is acceptable prior to endorsement. Twenty-seven, the two underground concrete infiltration systems under the school shall be inspected monthly for the first year and thereafter quarterly by a professional engineer or planning board approved equivalent who has attended a manufactured certificate training program on stormwater system observations and maintenance. Each maintenance inspection report shall be stamped and signed by the licensed professional engineer approved equivalent and has signatures of the principal, superintendent, and assistant director of facilities so that they are aware of inspection and results. The reports shall be copied to the town director of facilities and planning office. Twenty-eight, inspection of the bottom of all infiltration systems must be performed by the planning board's consulting engineer prior to any backfill or system component installed before confirmed suitability of soils. Twenty-nine, stormwater construction as well as during construction. Stormwater during construction as well as in perpetuity after construction is not allowed to increase rate of rolling adjacent properties, the street, or offsite. It is the applicant's responsibility to apply the specific requirements of all, at all times, particularly during construction. Thirty, the drainage system is not, if the drainage system is not performing as designed and condition for if stormwater is observed going to a buddy properties or the street, the applicant, applicant shall cease work and immediately implement all necessary mitigation measures to permanently remedy the situation. This condition applies to all construction activities and survives the issues of a certificate of completion to apply during all ongoing operations, building, or site. Thirty-one, if it is found during construction that pipe sizes in the ground are different from those used in the analysis of the stormwater conveyance system at the Anvil Road, the design engineer should immediately be contacted, who shall contact, contacted, who shall contact the planning department. Following the connection to existing stormwater system, the downstream system shall be inspected during significant rain while events to ensure no ponding or flooding on roadway occurs. Thirty-two, no sediment, including filthy water, shall be allowed to leave the site during construction. I don't need to change the numbers here, do I?
No.
Just keep going. Thirty-four, size, size and calculations and flow paths for the temporary sedimentation basin shall be provided to the town planner prior to scheduling the reconstruction conference along with the activated NFTs permit. Thirty-five, the lighting in the parking lot shall be programmable as to on-off and intensity. All lights shall be no higher than twenty feet and shall shine downward and toward the school. The light shall be designed to turn off at night with occupancy sensors turn the lights at low power level if there is motion in the parking lot. Thirty-six, a sign permit shall be required from the building commissioner. Any sign must meet the zoning bylaw section seven ten and be reviewed by the planning board prior to the application. Thirty-seven, tactile warning pads within the public layout shall be cast iron. Structure. Thirty-eight, a pre-construction conference will be required prior to the start of construction, which conference shall include a representative of DPW, the site contractor, owner's project manager, O F P, the town planner, and conservation, and natural resources office, officer, and any other town departments as necessary or required by the town planner. Thirty-nine, prior to rescheduling, prior to scheduling the pre-conference, pre-construction conference, a commitment to cover funding for inspections by the consulting engineer for stormwater shall be provided to the planning board. A schedule of construction activities shall be given to the town planner along with Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, SWIP, and NFTs permit. The construction general permit and SWIP, signed by the contractor, shall be provided to the town planner for review and approval prior to scheduling the reconstruction conference and prior to submitting to the E D A. A minimum of two weeks shall be required for this review. Forty, inspection and observations made according to the SWIP shall be submitted to the town planner weekly. Forty-one, all work within the right of way of Anvil Road shall be coordinated with the DPW. DPW shall be notified prior to the start of work within the right of way of Anvil Road. Other than as required by them, necessary work in the right of way. There shall be no parking or idling of vehicles on Anvil Road or any adjacent side of streets during construction. Forty-two, all replacement of, of connection, all replacement of and connection to town sewer, drainage, and the installation of water mains and impertinences on town of Situate property shall be performed according to the specifications of the City DPW with a third-party inspector employed to review construction activity and ensure compliance with the town rules and regulations. Forty-three, stormwater control measures shall be maintained by the applicant according to the Long-Term Pollution Prevention Plan and Stormwater Operations and Maintenance, O N M, plan submitted for the project and the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, SWIP. A freestanding copy of the Operation and Maintenance Plan shall be provided prior to endorsement, signed by the owner with the responsible party information pleaded. The maintenance of the subsurface infiltration structures must be revised further, per the conditions and included in the standalone O N M document. Stormwater system now must be updated with Stormwater Practices number. Forty-four, the property line and boundary of the limit of clearing shall be marked or flagged and appealed under the direction of the surveyor and notification given to the town planner a minimum of three business days prior to construction. Forty-five, prior to any land disturbance, erosion control shall be installed and inspected by the town planner or equipment agent. At that time, the site is to be staked to show the building and drainage improvements. All stockpiles shall be surrounded by an erosion-controlled area and not relocate within one hundred feet of wetland. Of all of it. Additional erosion controls such as silk fence, silk sock, or hay bales placed prior to a precipitation event may be needed to prevent sediment from reaching the road or damaging properties during construction. All erosion controls shall be installed for the plan and maintain a good work order throughout construction. Forty-six, all clearing and earthmoving operations shall occur, shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures are in place. Forty-seven, a crushed stone construction entrance as detailed on the plan is required and shall be installed prior to the start of work. The stabilized construction entrance must be maintained throughout construction to prevent dirt and from trapping onto the road. Water and sediment shall not be discharged into the infiltration basin until the site is fully stabilized. Forty-eight, the town planner is to be notified when erosion control measures are in place, when construction begins, when construction is completed. If deemed necessary, the town planner includes consultation with the DPW engineering staff. Temporary sedimentation basins, check dams, silksaws, and or noise and dust control may be required in addition to these erosion control measures shown on the plan. All erosion control measures shall remain until the planner, town planner, and as necessary, the conservation agent turns that the danger of erosion or sedimentation no longer exists. Request for inspections required, forty-eight hours minimum notice. Question. Forty-nine, construction shall proceed according to the construction plans, construction basin plans. Fifty, no heavy equipment shall be used inside stormwater basins once they are constructed, except skid steers. Fifty-one, all construction work shall not begin prior to seven A M weekdays and eight A M on Saturday and shall cease no later than seven P M or sunset or generate earlier. No construction shall take place on Sunday or legal or federal holidays. The applicant shall manage construction lights so they cannot be a nuisance to the neighbors. Construction includes idling of trucks and machinery. The applicant shall not allow any large construction equipment or trucks to stage or idle on public roads. Fifty-two, the applicant shall notify the town forty-eight hours in advance of significant equipment and material arrival to the site, which may cause a safety hazard or a material disruption of the public way, such that a police detail is needed to ensure safe passage. Any police detail required is at the applicant's expense. Construction activity fifty-three, construction activities shall be conducted in a workman-like manner at all times. Blowing dust or debris shall be controlled by the applicant through stabilization, wetting down, or other property storage disposal methods. Fifty-four, the applicant shall follow all regulations under Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, three-ten C M R seven point zero zero, air pollution control seven point oh one, general regulations to prevent air pollution, and three-ten C M R seven point oh nine, U dust odor construction and demolition. For three-ten C M R seven point oh nine U, water must be used to prevent excessive emission of a particular matter throughout construction or project. Fifty-five, no use of hybrids onsite or adjacent roads is allowed in construction use. A hybrid may be available at the water treatment plant but construction use during non-water main towns. Fifty-six, no parking or unloading on Anvil Road shall be permitted during construction. Construction vehicles shall use the designated construction exit, which shall be appropriately found. Fifty-seven, in an effort to reduce noise levels, the applicant shall keep all equipment that emanates sound from the structures on site in proper working order through regular maintenance. Fifty-eight, blasting if necessary shall contain all with the third permits and the all requirements. Our five departments. Fifty-nine, hauling of construction materials to and from the site shall not occur during Haveli School bus hours in the morning and afternoon. These hours are generally seven fifteen A M to eight, eight forty-five A M, and two P M to three thirty P M. These hours are to be confirmed annually with the superintendent schools with documentation provided to the planning office within forty-eight hours of the superintendent. Sixty, the following roads shall not be traveled by heavy construction equipment including haul trucks and construction delivery trucks. Blue Hill Road, Vanlaugh Road, Captain Pierce Road, Manhill Road, and Arbor Way Drive. It is encouraged that the trucks use countryway to Paulard Street to Anvil. The applicant shall provide the town with the route construction traffic will use so that if a safety hazard or material destruction of the public way or the safe passage, a police detail will be obtained by the applicant at the expense. Sixty-one, all construction parking shall be onsite unless otherwise approved by the planning board. Sixty-two, new school, school zone signals and advanced warning signs are required for the project. Placement to be coordinated with the DPW, engineering, and town planner following all applicable state and federal laws. Sixty-three, all disturbed areas not receiving any other specialized treatment shall be doomed and seeded with six-inch of clean foam. Sixty-four, cameras shall be considered for the use, for use in the interest of public safety during construction. After construction. Sixty-five, a set of Asphal plans planned by a registered surveyor and reviewed by the registered professional engineer who designed the system shall be submitted to the planning board within thirty days of completion of the work. This plan shall include the construction conditions of the stormwater management system, utilities, drainage, building, site amenities, and driveways. The Asphal plan must be submitted and such plans must be found in compliance with the approved permit prior to obtaining certificate of occupancy. All grading and landscaping must be complete prior to the Asphal supplemental. Sixty-six, if signage identifying the building other than for entrance, exit directions or safety purposes is incorporated at a later stage of the project's design, it shall be reviewed by the planning board prior to application of a sign permit.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is Tom Reb, the Director of Business and Finance.
Yes.
I don't know if it's come up, but I'd like to respectfully request a consideration of option fifty, Article fifty-five. We had a late conversation with Kevin Cafferty this afternoon. And he said, we could say use of town water for the project shall be coordinated and approved by the DPW. That would allow us to go through the DPW and make sure that we're appropriately using town water. But the way it's written right now could be construed to not allow us use of town water on the property at all, which would force the project to bring in tankers of water at a significant increased cost. So he was suggesting a reconsideration of that number fifty-five to say, you know, coordinate with the DPW for any use of town water, and that would protect the town in that regard. So I'm just respectfully requesting a discussion and reconsideration of that one.
All right, so that came in very late this afternoon. The previous condition was what the standard condition was the tab that we use. We will change the condition as written by the Director of DPW at, oh, after three o'clock this afternoon.
What, I'm sorry, so what are you using the water for?
Basically, I don't know, the project seemed to respond to that.
Yeah, I mean, it would be for masonry, it would be for painting, it would be for cleaning, you know, cleaning of paintbrushes. It would be for. It would be for.
Just basically everything, dust control. You name it. We've worked on the public safety building, the senior center. I know Dorn Whittier has worked on gates. It is always, we've, we have always been able to utilize town water with a meter. So there's no question about paying for it, but we've never had to truck it in. And I would tell you, one ninety-nine point nine percent of our municipal projects, we've never had to truck in water at a premium to have it brought in. We do have to at the end for you typically for irrigation and setting up plants and that sort of thing. That's, that part is understood, but for the.
Well, let's make sure that's sent here, that it's not for irrigation.
It is not for irrigation. That is correct, just for construction.
So let's not. That was what I was thinking about.
And by irrigation, we mean establishing plants, watering of plants, yeah. During the establishment period.
Anybody else have a problem?
I know we sort of discussed around a few things. I did not state sort of affirmatively that, you know, this is going to be an active school zone during construction.
That's right.
And the applicant will be responsible for managing construction traffic and activity to minimize or prevent any disruption of the students or classrooms or their access to the school. I think they have to be affirmatively responsible for that. We don't really say that here anymore.
Number fifty-one, Steve says all construction works shall not begin prior to seven AM and.
I'm not worried about when it begins. I know we already said that.
I know, but what I'm trying to say is maybe in that particular item forty-one, they can't be disrupted.
Yeah, I think, I think it's fine if you want to put it there, that would be fine.
Yes.
So you want me to add to that condition fifty-one?
Right.
That the no disruption, I mean minimal disruption to the students attending schools shall be allowed.
And just there was what's there to make sure that it doesn't happen?
Yeah, but they need special details at particular times and that's what they calculate.
Minimal disruption to prevent disturbance, schoolchildren?
Yeah.
People working, it's a lot of money.
That's, it's all I have.
Is everybody okay?
Oh, a question for you. Why did we strike thirty-three?
Because they said they already have a signage. And it's not just a one-way loop. It's, it's already signed else, else place. It's gonna be signed.
Once they start construction, they don't need to change any signage here anymore?
That was more of a finished commission. That's why that, that one was struck.
Okay.
Yeah, the condition was originally written to make it sound like the drive around the back of the site was only going to be for fire access and it's actually for buses and deliveries as well.
Okay, but this also says site could be installed for vehicle access.
They have a whole signage plan with signage.
Anything else? Second amendment.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. You didn't ask them what.
Well, then they need to speak up.
Anything else we can do for you, gentlemen?
I just had some questions on thirty-nine and forty. Just trying to clarify who it is that's doing the inspections that are described in these, in these conditions. So let's take thirty-nine, prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, a commitment to cover funding for inspections by the consulting engineer for stormwater. Is that our consulting engineer or is that the town?
Consulting engineer. It's a typical thing on every project of a public project. We limit the scope pretty much to drain it. So that will have to come out of the school funding.
Okay. So that's, John, you heard that, right? So that's a, that's a budget thing.
Yep.
We'll have to ascertain what that is and included in the budget.
Yep, you got it.
Okay. And then forty, is that the same, is that the town inspector?
No, that, as I went to at the E now, there's usually somebody certified in SWIP on the construction site. So somebody who's certified in SWIP has to submit the weekly reports.
Okay, so that would be someone from the construction manager, the general contractor.
That would be from the GC, Tom. Yeah. And most of, and as long as we have it in the specifications, it's in the order of conditions. You know, that's, the superintendent is usually, you know, the lead super is usually responsible for that.
Okay. And then finally.
Weekly inspections require by the SWIP anyway, right?
Right.
We're just saying, give us a copy.
They have, right, we're just saying, give us a copy.
Yep, got it. So then finally forty-two, there's a third-party inspector to employ to review construction activity, ensure compliance. Who is that?
Alright, the third-party inspector for drainage is the town's peer review engineer.
Okay, so it's the same group. Okay, alright, that's all, that's all I had.
Are you all set?
All set.
We are all set.
I think we're good, yes. The Dr. Robb sends his apologies. He had to leave. He had an emergency at home. He had to take care of.
Oh.
Are you, second of. Yes, I'm ready, sorry.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Hey, thank you, everybody.
I really want to thank the board.
Don't let the school flood ours.
Don't let the school flood ours, okay?
We do appreciate your input and the regulatory process does make for a better project. We really appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll be right away. We'll be fifteen minutes behind. I'll probably be meeting a site plan minister review, three fifty-eight, three sixty, get our votes. Weekly gentleman.
Hi, I'm Bill Warren Burke, represent Karen Toddler and give spouse Katie here tonight for the ownership of the property. And also with the.
I get Christmas up here last night.
We have plenty of right here, but they were all here.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry, go ahead.
I'm Bill Warren Burke, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Aaron, Katie, and Toddler, who are Monica Lincoln, those residents, who own this property. Also with me is Emily Herman and Westwood, and she is the co-owner of Split Rock Situate, providing food and beverage service at the site. Just by way, and also with me on virtually is our engineer Hal Killa. And as just a brief review, the selectmen have approved a seasonal license to the premises where we shortly we should have the ATCC approval of that. And in addition to that, I would like to thank Karen for the diligence she did in putting together the decision, the conditions on that. All including amendment today, all to each other in one direction, which the procedure is what I've been full of there. Town's consulting engineer, our engineer, replied to them and agreed to provide the answer for all those things. I believe the board of health, they submitted a letter. They have pride and authority. They have a couple of things that, that will be done in accordance with this. And at the outset, I think this is a great plan, great beginning of revitalization of, you know, Situate, power pending availability of school. And and we can give a brief presentation if you would like one, otherwise we have to answer any questions. Myself, Aaron, Hal. Aaron, I don't think you, not per view of the board, unless you're of a curiosity, you want to know food and beverage service. And so, what are your pleasure?
I think, I think a brief presentation would be nice to have, can overview what the plan is here.
Okay, so Hal, are you with us?
I'm sorry, he's on there earlier. He is there.
Does he need his screen shot?
He would, yeah. How are you there?
He's here.
I, I am, I need, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I can't turn my video on, so.
Hal, this is Bill Warren Burke, can you hear me right now?
I, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Hal, so what, I don't know if you missed, but just give, and I know the plan is up here, just a very brief orientation about about the.
Well, this is a redevelopment of three sixty Gannett Street. The site is located in the, in the village center and the neighborhood district. Prior to, there was a restaurant, I believe, that was burnt a few years ago and the building was removed from the site. Basically, the, the building was approximately fifty percent of the site area. So the site measures about five thousand square feet and currently is covered with approximately sixty feet of, of sixty percent of impervious surfaces. And the, the applicant is, would like to develop the site for a seasonal split rock beer cave. We, we have a site layout. I can share, if you have the site, you have the site layout on the, on the evil, I believe, right?
We have, yes, thank you.
Okay, so basically, access to, the, the site will be fenced in all around by a six-foot-high fence, shadow box-type fence. We have the detail on, on the site. So there will be a fifteen, an eight-foot by forty-five-foot container that would be used to serve the beer and some snacks, and I believe that's a seasonal use. To the back of it will be an eight-by-twelve walk-in cooler. The structure itself would be in compliance with zoning. Access to the site would be through the existing concrete sidewalk on Gannett Street through a six-foot gate on the wrought iron gate that we saw on, at the, at Gannett Road. The, the access is by pervious pavers and the reason we chose the pervious pavers, we to have handicap accessibility up to the container to access the, the container and the bathrooms. To the right and the left of the access path, as you see, it's a six-foot wide access, would be the picnic tables and some planters, the benches, and also to the southwest corner would be a place for a bike rack. Also, there, there's also a room for a food truck on the southwest corner to pull to the site in case, I believe, Aaron or the attorney can, can elaborate on that. But, and also we have two means of egress to the site along the westerly side of the site. One to access the food truck will be almost close to the southwest corner. Another one will be along the northwest corner to access the container for delivery, to take out the trash. The trash would be in the back corner, all fenced in. And the area to the rear is also fenced in from, to, to allow the, not to allow the public to access the rear, just only the employees. Most of the, the site would be covered with peystone. Also concerning the, the stormwater, the only stormwater that we would be concerned about or would be impervious surfaces on site would be the area of the container itself and the walk-in cooler. The, the two combined as approximately five hundred and sixty square feet. And all that runoff would be directed to the peystone area on site. We did submit calculations and it was reviewed by the peer, peer review by the peer engineer, and we all in agreement that the site has more than enough capacity to handle the, this, the runoff that was generated from the roof areas. There was a couple of suggestions on the, with the engineer. I think we agreed that we would change the, the sand underneath the, the pervious pavers to, to rice sand-type of stone, which is a little coarser than the sand. The, there will be no impervious, no, there will be no runoff from the site to any adjacent streets or properties. And this is an improvement over the existing conditions because currently you have about sixty percent of the site covered with impervious surfaces. So basically we'll be reducing the runoff from the site by fifty-three percent almost. Again, it's, we have planters all around. I think I submitted previously a couple of rendering what the site would look like. We do have a floor layout for the container, for the container itself. The has one accessible handicap bathroom and two other bathrooms that are for the public. I think one would be men's room and the other would be a female, I believe, a woman's bathroom. There are to the rear. Two bathrooms, okay. Unisex, probably, right? The trash is in the back, all enclosed. And it's all accessible. I put the slopes and the drain, on the grading plan so you can see that it's all ADI compliant. The, it's, all the buildings would be in compliance with the zoning and I don't believe we're asking, correct? Yeah. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
And I could, for, just to briefly, Karen's conditions are very, very comprehensive and in, you know, I'm, we need everyone to review those, such as concerns above, you know, there's no parking of any vehicles under what I link in our road, Gannett Road, or and there's many, many other things, all of which we reviewed and agreed to, including what's recent request, iteration, candidacy from, from the police chief. And so any specific things, we will, the other thing wasn't mentioned is Title Five compliant or tight tanks on there that have been tested and approved and will be connected to this, obviously, before food and beverage permits are issued, the board of health will do final inspections of, of the container. food and beverage permits are issued, the board of health will do final inspections of, of the container. Like it says, a temporary use and which is, has been said, but just repeated quickly, is when sewer does become available and there's conditions to that effect, is that the couple's intention is, is to under the, exist under the current bylaw, by laws in effect at that point is to comply with that, build a restaurant building in there with whatever's required for also residential on a, for.
The bathroom is piped to the tight tank?
Correct.
That's right, how's the? Does that get pumped out?
I pump it, huh?
I'm sorry?
I pump it.
No, how's the truck get access?
There, there's actually, the truck gets access and the access is, is through a through a, through the prop, you're inside the container, right?
Well, there's, there are several hatches to pump up, so.
I mean, does he have to park along the side of the fence or?
Does he go in the back?
Does he go in the back of the, or? Just wondering how the, the actual truck.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying. We, I think he's, might be able to get in where that food truck area is and snake up there. I, I don't think the back would be available. That's, that ability, basically, the, the parking lot for.
Is the, is the tight tank close to that, that area?
Yeah, the tight tank is, is kind of, what is that, northwest corner, huh?
Which, yeah.
Northeast, yes, the, the truck will be able to pull up next to the, and, and pump it out, yes.
Okay. My only other question in this is, I see you have like two means of sort of access on the west side. Is, is there any need to have access on the east side?
Uh, east side is a McBrian parking lot.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking emergency dressing.
Jump over the fence. Quite tight up to that.
I mean, I need to talk on the fence.
I know. The fence in the front is going to be four, four foot ground irons. Is that, Hal, were you saying that, is the ingress and egress that applicable for an outdoor venue?
Yeah, we have three means of, I mean, three means of egress to, to the site. You got two on the west and one to the, to the south.
Do you guys have a TV and fire pit there?
Uh, no fire.
Yeah, no fire, we will have a TV though.
Um, so this is supposed to be a temporary use until which time sewer comes in and is put to the site. We did, did put in a provision that it, you know, first time it's good for two, two years and then thereafter renewed yearly. We don't know how long it's really going to take sewer to come into North Cituit at which time they will apply, you know, we conditioned that they need to apply for something that's allowable use and building type by the zoning by law. North Cituit's a mandatory. You know, obviously, I mean, the tight tanks, they, they were tested, they have Title V approval, I talked to Joan in the board of health. They still haven't, the food stuff off has to be gone through with the board of health, they haven't submitted plans for that. The drainage was all peer reviewed and so the, the water should stay on site, which would be an improvement over today. So you received at least five comments. I didn't, again, some of them came today, so I didn't bother to send them to you of people who want, want projects approved. We did put, the first, there's a condition for the applicant to work with the police chief and the select board so that the first hundred feet on the east side of Mordecai Lincoln becomes no parking. And that, but that could, it can be their loading zone, you know, fifteen minute parking loading zone. Right now, only the west side is no parking for the first hundred feet. And I really think it makes sense for them to pursue that so that, you know, it's good for trucks turning, et cetera. We anticipated, in my discussions with police chief, we anticipated that, that service to, would, you know, go on Mordecai Lincoln, they would either back in on Mordecai Lincoln or back out. They would probably not go down Mordecai Lincoln and go over the bridge.
Thank you.
Right, right, but I mean, they, I was told the truck servicing this are going to be a smaller, like a single unit truck, we're not going to have semis servicing this, this site.
Now, is it lit?
How's it lit?
Yeah, lovely.
Oh, sorry, so we're going to have string lighting, kind of throughout.
String, yeah.
Yeah, similar to what we have in Cohasset, we're going to have a couple kind of landscape lights, we're going to have a couple, we might, our hydrangea trees and we're going to kind of have them focus in little spotlight areas and then we're going to also have a couple of lights from the container to point down so that you, when patrons come in, they can, you know, see. So very similar to our Cohasset lighting plan.
Any else, Karen?
No, I, you know, I've written a draft approval decision and I would recommend the board approval with the conditions by the folks.
Well, yes, does anybody in the pub have anything they'd like to contribute tonight? You have a lot of people, could you identify yourself, which is your name and your address?
Sure, Chris Diario, seven nineteen Country Wood, was here to speak in favor of the project. You know, since North Cituit hasn't really been the same since Jamie's burned down. And, you know, I think this is the perfect design and project to, to go into that space. And the space in Cohasset that they, these guys run is, is great, it's low key, it's family friendly and make a real benefit to that area, so we've got to forward approving this, it's getting it open for the summer.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think we should also, oh, okay, or, anybody online who'd like to say something about the project? I believe it is, but I'm, I'm lost, yes, Mr. Parker.
Yeah, the, the only, the only question, just to start, Aaron, about this is, on the site, presently, the intention is, is on approval of this, Aaron's going to apply for a payment, just go through all of the recent summary departments. And, and I know there's a pre-construction conference with this, there, one of the desires to to get this open is early season, we get, can't, or we open Cohasset, is on the site, there is just basically demolition work, which is, you know, is a small shed, is, is the, the impervious surface, which exists is asphalt, concrete paths, and grading and what the proposal, which we had, as one of the discusses under conditioning, in, in the pre-construction conference. As customary is, we would effectively request, it would, yeah, this would prepare the demolition work and site work without a pre-construction conference with the food worker, the building inspector or anyone else, because that would allow to get a jump on the things so that he could work towards getting that container and and the subsequent things on site.
Aaron?
Will we, will we just address it after we, at the beginning of this?
Would you prefer to do this as we go along?
I'll, I'll go through it to a point and then we can have to do it.
All right, satisfactory, can we go here?
I know what you're looking for and I, I can think, okay.
The other question, just to ask a question, and again, that's a forced procedure, I'm prerogative. You know, we'd stipulate the condition that, as they, the discussion, it's not, from our standpoint, it's not necessary that they're red with, you know, incorporate that by RAPR, if the board won.
Edward, you don't want to hear my wonderful voice?
No, I, I love, I love to hear, but I don't want to see what you've already kind of like, no.
I think we would be, yes, into the RAPR.
Right, we're really into the RAPR, okay?
All right, this has to do with the site plan administrative review, Split Rock Cituit, three fifty-eight to three sixty Gannett Road. I move to make the following findings of fact. One, Split Rock Cituit, the applicant submitted an application for site plan administrative review, which was duly filed with the town court on March twenty-seventh, November twenty-five. The application consists of, consists of the application, a site plan review narrative, deed reported with former county registry of deeds, a butters list, copy of paid tax bill, floor plans, draft conditions of approval and existing conditions planned, Split Rock Cituit at three sixty Gannett Road, consisting of six sheets and five feet. Two, the site consists of a total area of approximately five thousand seven hundred six square feet, according to the assessment records. The existing conditions, conditions plan shows five thousand seven hundred forty-seven square feet of lot size. The site is at, is a corner lot of Mordecai Lincoln Road and Gannett Road with frontage on both these roads. The site is a vacant lot with some existing utilities remaining from a former Jamie's Pub, which burned down in twenty seventeen. The site consists of a gravel area, concrete paths, the tumines paved and existing ten foot right of way. Three, the site is located in the village center and neighborhood district, North Cituit Village Center, Village Center Sub District, B C N, N S V, O V, zoning district, which is a mandatory excuse district. Four, the zoning bylaw in effect for this project is the bylaw approved by the Cituit Annual Town Meeting of four eight twenty twenty-four and the attorney general on seven ten twenty twenty-four and posted the website in July twenty twenty-four. Time, the project proposed by the applicant consists of a container building eight feet wide and forty feet long.
What is it, five feet long?
Forty-five feet long for three hundred sixty square feet with a walk-in cooler to the rear of the container building. The building will be a temporary building to be used to house Split Rock Cituit, which is a temporary seasonal use establishment, serving light fare and beverages. There will be an outdoor seating area for consumption of beverages and light fare and outdoor entertainment. The establishment will be open approximately April through October and have light amplified acoustical music. A lease is in place and Split Rock Cituit has received approvals for an entertainment license and seasonal liquor license from the Cituit Board of Selectment. Since the height of the container building will be less than forty feet, the container building will be a temporary use on a site until sewer service is brought in North Cituit and brought to the property. The site formerly housed Jamie's Pub, which burned down in twenty seventeen. A commercial use was formerly at the site for years and several of the utilities remain. The site has been vacant now for over seven years and has decided to bring life back to a vacant site and revitalize a portion of the building center. The Cituit zoning bylaw does not prohibit, prohibit temporary uses. The applicant will apply for a use and building type allowed in zoning district when sewer comes to property. Eight, parking is not required in the B C N, N S V, V C districts for ground floor and commercial uses or by right projects. Four determines a single story temporary building meets this definition. Nine, a pedestrian frontage zone is required along Gannett Road. Four determines that temporary use of the building as a commercial space with an outdoor entertainment and eating area satisfies this requirement on a temporary basis until permanent establishment is created. Ten, a restaurant is allowed use in the B C N and N S V, V C, and a commercial building is an allowed building type in this district. Four determines that the container building to be a temporary commercial building. Eleven, a commercial building, as the proposed project, has general design standards bound in section seven fifty point five, including the project has one building on the lot, which meets the required dimension standards. The container building is not located outside of any required front side or rear setbacks, except as otherwise permitted. The build to zone occupancy is met. The project is a corner lot and waves the requirements for a temporary building. The scale of the project is visually compatible with the site and the nature. Exterior building requirements are waived for the temporary building. Twelve, a commercial building, as is the proposed project, includes lot standards and design standards bound in seven fifty point six, including a minimum lot size is not required. Street frontage of fifty feet is required, fifty-eight point seven five feet is provided on Gannett Road and ninety-nine point three six feet is provided on Mordecai Lincoln. Lot depth is not required. The front yard, build to zone setback is zero feet minimum and twenty feet maximum. Approximately sixty-five feet is provided from Gannett Road and seven feet from Mordecai Lincoln Road. The board finds that this is acceptable for the temporary use, however, a permanent building will need to, will need to comply with setbacks. Minimum side yard is zero feet if a common wall with an adjacent building exists, which this project is not thus ten feet, which this project is not, thus ten feet is required, ten feet is provided. Minimum rear yard is fifteen feet, which is provided for the walk-in floor. Outdoor amenities space is required, is ten percent, although no number is given, the site appears to comply with temporary use as there is greenery and amenities on site. The building height conforms, it requires a street facing wall with, is forty feet and thus the building complies with forty-five feet. No maximum footprint is applicable. Thirteen, development site standards, section seven fifty point eight are met. The project site consists of more temporary building and existing right of ways on the property, however, the development site is not in the right way. A commercial building is a permanent building type in this district. Fifty feet of frontage is provided, a development block stand, development block standards are not applicable. Temporary site landscaping is provided, a full landscape plan is waived, no parking is required and no driveway to the site is provided. New public utilities will be provided as underground utilities and outdoor trash storage is provided. A loading dock, a loading area will be provided on Mordecai Lincoln Road and signed for fifteen minute parking. A bicycle raft is provided, the front yards include only pervious surfaces. Fourteen, section seven six, seven, seven seventy point six A, site plan approval standard A, protection of adjoining premises against detrimental and offensive methods utilizing the site. Final, tasteful fencing will be placed around the entire property to keep sightlines clean. There will be a six foot high wooden fence around the sides and the back with the back protected by acoustical fencing by a barrier for sound. The container building will also gloss out. There will be a four foot high wrought iron fence in the front with seasonal plantings. The site is in the village center of the North Cituit Village Center and Neighborhood District, where commercial and mixed uses, use are required. This site is surrounded by commercial uses. The board finds that the adjoining premises will be protected as condition against any detrimental or offensive use of the site and the plan meets the standard of review for Cituit zoning bylaw, section seven seventy point six, paragraph A. Fifteen, section seven seventy point six B, site plan approval standard B, traffic safety and ease of access at the street and highway entrances and exits of driveways taking account of traffic volume, rates, site distances and distances between roadway entrances exits and the nearest existing street or highway intersections and time for traffic flow. Finally, the site will not have any parking available as an in, in the North Cituit Village Center and Neighborhood District, Village Center Sub District, whereby right, commercial. Center and Neighborhood District, Village Center Sub District whereby right commercial on the ground floor you uses does not require parking to be provided as there is public parking on the street and other municipal parking areas. Customers are expected to arrive by motor bicycle and then by park to park the municipal parking areas. The site plan meets the standards of review of the Situate zoning by law for section seven seven point six B. Sixteen, section seven seventy point six C, site plan approval standard C, safety and adequacy of driveway layout, pedestrian safety, off street parking and loading sites, minimizing glare from headlights, light intrusion, sufficiency of access for service vehicles such as electricity, gas, fuel, telephone, laundry, rubbish removal, water, sewer, fire, police, ambulance or other routine or emergency vehicles. Finding, the site is located in the North Situate Village Center and Neighborhood District, Village Center Sub District will have no driveway to speak of. There will be periodic trash, septic renewal performed by contractors with experience who endeavor to ensure minimal disruption to the surrounding area. Existing sidewalks provide provide access to the site. The planning board applies that the site plan meet the standard review of Situate zoning by law, section seven seventy point six C. Seventeen, section seven seventy point six D, site plan approval standard D, adequacy of the methods of disposal, sewer sewage refuse and other waste resulting from the uses permitted on the site, safety and adequacy of water supply, distribution and firefighting facilities on site. Finding, the existing tank tanks on site will be used sewage capture. They will be tested per title five regulations to determine if they are still tight. The site will meet title five regulations prior to a building permit being issued. The site is on town water. There is a bio hydrant on the west side of Mordecai Lincoln, which is available for firefighting. Planning board finds that the site plan meets the standard of review of the Situate zoning by law, seven seventy point six D for adequacy of methods of waste disposal, adequacy of water supply, firefighting facilities on site. Eighteen, section seven seventy point six E, site plan approval standard E, adequacy of surface and stormwater drainage and snow melt runoff within and from the site, including but not limited to all walkways, driveways, buildings, parking and loading areas. Finding, the site plan was reviewed by the board's consulting engineer, Janet Bernardo, P E, of course, with group for stormwater plans indicate they will be an approximate fifty percent decrease in impervious ground coverage on the site and all the water will infiltrate. The review of the stormwater management system by the planning board's consultant engineer and the unlimited approval on site plan eliminates the requirement for several stormwater permits under the stormwater general by law and its regulations for any work that conforms to plans. The application indicates the drainage system that is expected to result in post development runoff characteristics, including peak flow, full of volume runoff and water quality runoff to be equal or less than three development conditions. The site is not in the Water Resource Protection District. The site meets the standards, the standard of Situate zoning by law, section seven seventy point six E for adequacy of stormwater management, although infiltration under the building is not recommended.
I think that's what's up.
Okay. Although in alteration. Nineteen, section seven seventy point six F, site plan approval standard F. If the site is located within the Water Resource Protection District, adequacy of provisions made to protect against toxic or hazardous materials or oil discharge or loss resulting from corrosion, accidental damage, spillage or vandalism through measures such as spill control, provisions in the vicinity of chemical or field duty points, fewer storage areas for toxic or hazardous materials or oil and indoor storage provisions for rotable or dissolvable materials. Finding, the site is not located in the Water Resource Protection District. Twenty, section seven seventy point six G, site plan approval standard G, minimizing the volume of cut and build, the number of trees of six inch caliber or greater removed. The length of stone walls are due to soil erosion and destruction of other natural features. Finding, overgrowth has been cleared from the property since the dispens dock after the fire. Overgrowth was brushed, small weeds less than six inches in caliber, including squash.
Really?
Really. No stone walls are on site. There are no unique or remarkable natural features or scenic views on the site. The site plan meets the standards of Situate zoning by law, section seven seventy point six G. Twenty one, section seven seventy point six H, site plan approval standard H, minimizing destruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. Finding, the site plan meets the standard of zoning by law, section seven, point seven seventy point six, a screening is provided in the form of fencing. The standard is met. Twenty two, section seven seventy point six point one, site plan approval standard I, parking areas shall be adequately upper and shaded using gated vegetation. Parking lots with ten or more spaces shall be planted with at least one shade tree for ten spaces of caliber of at least two and a half inches D P H. With each tree providing shade to the parking area, parking areas and visual grading elements such as dumpsters and loading docks shall be designed to minimize visual intrusion for public ways and residentially owned or zone areas. In addition, a suitable screening of such areas by wooden fences and dense native evergreen heavy supply be or more at time of planting shall be required. The use of chain link fences shall be avoided except in industrial areas. Outdoor lighting, including lighting on the exterior of the building or of lighting in parking areas shall be arranged to minimize layer and light spill over to the neighborhood properties. No outdoor light shall be located twenty feet above the ground. Finding, there will be no parking on site. There will be trash bins, not dumpsters, and they will be screened by fencing. Although lighting shall be restricted to string lights and some downward facing lights for the building, container for customer access and safety, along with some small decorative lights of no more than eight feet in height pointing downward. The call, excuse me, the requirements of by law, section seven seventy point six I have been met. Twenty three, section seven seventy point six J, site plan approval standard J, safe, functional and convenient pedestrian bicycle and where practical transit access and continuity of the pedestrian bicycle network within the property and to nearby pedestrian and bicycle facilities and trip generators. Finding, the board finds that there is safe, functional and convenient access as the site is located, located within walking distance of the North Situate M B T A station with sidewalks leading to the station. A bicycle ramp is proposed on site. There is crosswalk on Gannett Road. It's expected that prime teller will ride by foot or bicycle. Requirements of your by law have been met. The site plan administration. The site plan entitled split rock situate at three sixty Gannett Road, situated mass by Truba Engineering Group dated March twenty 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 five with revision from April sixteen twenty twenty five, consisting of six sheets, building plans by Mini Warehouse Inc. dated three twenty five twenty twenty five, consisting of five sheets meets the requirements of the town of Situate zoning by law, section seven seventy point six, site plan review standards of review would agree consistent with the reasonable use of the site for temporary building for the purpose permitted by the regulations of the district in which the land is located. Is there a sign? For the stretch.
Scott, please.
Any kind of mind with that? Okay. That was the second.
Be second, yes.
Yeah. Go with the book.
Oh, paper.
I know. We're getting ready. Swallowing, but we're getting it. I move to approve the site plan administrator review for temporary commercial building of three fifty eight and three sixty Gannett Road, subject to the following conditions. One, all site works shall be in substantial performance with site plans submitted split rock situate at three sixty Gannett Road, situated by Truba Engineering Group date March twenty 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 five, consisting of six feet, building plans by Mini Warehouse Inc. dated three twenty five twenty twenty five, consisting of five sheets accepted if they modify and changes are necessary to meet a condition. The building shall meet all pertinent requirements of Massachusetts State Building Code. Three, materials and details of construction shall meet all pertinent requirements of the D P W Board of Health, Fire Department Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Building Department and Commission on Disabilities. Where this site plan administrator review will require us approval permitting or licensing from any local state or federal agency, such required approval permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the town of Situate Planning Board. Approval of this site, approval of the site. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to construction. For any required upgrades for water shall be at the owner's expense and a one inch line is required. Five, the site shall be in compliance with title five and the Board of Health requirements prior to a building permit being issued. Six, no new underground irrigation systems shall be allowed to connect to the town's water distribution system or in any manner use municipal water in accordance with the policy made effective by the Board of Selectment on October eighth twenty fourteen and reaffirmed by the Situate Water Commissioner on May twenty sixth twenty fifteen. All irrigation systems installed in accordance with policy must be supplied by on site sources of private water supplies. Seven, the planning board agrees that since the project is located in the village center and neighborhood district, North Situate Village Center District, Village Center Sub District, V C N, N S V, V C, that off street parking for ground floor commercial uses by right project is not required. Board considers container building to be ground floor commercial use with a by right use allowed by the V C N, N S V, V C, and thus parking is not required. Eight, applicant has indicated that the use of this property will not be permanent use of property and that once municipal sewer is available and installed to the property, it intends to acquire construction of a permanent fixed building for permissible use in the V C N, N S V, V C district utilizing municipal sewer disposal. Once municipal sewer is available and construction to the and constructed to the property, the applicant shall promptly make the application to the planning board for approval for a new site plan involving a permanent building with uses permitted in the V C N, N S V, V C district. Nine, the site plan shall expire upon the date a building permit is issued allowing a permanent building that is connected to town sewer to be utilized for permissible uses in the V C N, N S V, V C district. Ten, the temporary site plan use shall be valid for two years from the date of issuance. Extension shall be granted prior to the expiration of the permit for one year time increments, once one year time increments, as it is unclear when permanent sewer will be available to the site. Extensions cannot be reasonably withheld by the planning board. Eleven, sewage effluent shall be trucked off site to profit, as quoted, it informs applicable title five recommend, requirement, regulation. Twelve, any modifications should be approved. Site plan shall be submitted to the planning board for review and determination of significance and verification of standing for review are met. Thirteen, the town player is to be notified upon completion of construction. Fourteen, stormwater construction and as in perpetuity after construction is not allowed to increase rate of volume adjacent properties, the street of off, street off, offside, four, offside. It is the applicant's responsibility to comply with the specific requirements at all times, particularly during construction. Fifteen, the applicant shall diligently pursue no parking for the first one hundred feet on the east side of Mordecai Lincoln Road with the police chief and select board. Sixteen, deliveries shall occur from a loading zone on Mordecai Lincoln Road in the first of one hundred feet. The area to be signed for no parking with exemption for fifteen minute loading, unloading. Seventeen, a sign permit shall be required from the building commissioner. Any sign must meet the zoning by law section seven ten and be reviewed by the town planner prior to application to bill. Eighteen, a preconstruction conference will be required prior to the start of construction with conference shall include a representative of the D P W, the site contractor, the owner, town player and board of health and any other town departments as necessary are provided for the town player. Nineteen, a crushed stone construction entrance is required.
It was not there in a fantasy for demolition.
Excuse me?
The reason where we wanted to discuss our news demolition.
Do we want to go through all of them and then go back to this?
Sure. Yeah, we'll do that.
Let's, we'll go.
Go forward.
All right. Nineteen, a crushed stone construction entrance is required and shall be installed prior to the start of work. The stabilized construction entrance shall be maintained throughout construction to prevent dirt from trapping onto the job. Twenty, construction work shall not begin prior to seven AM weekdays and eight AM on Saturday and shall cease no later than seven PM on some or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sunday or legal federal holidays. Construction includes idling of trucks and machinery. The applicant shall not allow any large construction equipment or trucks or to stage or idle on public roads. Twenty one, the applicant shall notify the town forty eight hours in advance of significant equipment and material arrival to the site, which may cause a safety hazard or material disruption on the way with such that a police detail is needed to ensure safe passage. Any police detail requires at the outset suspense. Twenty two, no parking or unloading on Mordecai Lincoln Road or Gannett Road shall be permitted during the construction unless a police detail is provided. There shall be no infringement, infringement of any public sidewalk without a police detail. Twenty three, no fire pit is allowed or anticipated at this time. Twenty four, the applicant shall reconsider the use of sand for the previous pavement walkways to help avoid ant alligators. That, the confession. All right, Steve, number eighteen.
We start with a wife for the rest.
Yeah, so we want a preconstruction conference. But down the she, park and down plan. That we're sold next.
What?
No, they're dead.
No, wait.
What do you say?
The language submitted and again.
I'll see later.
I didn't share the language.
Okay. However, the applicant may commence preparatory demolition in site work without preconstruction conference with the approval of the building inspector. It is, and like I said, the nature of that is to remove, remove the impervious surface, take the shed, take the shed off and air and do some break, but that's the extent.
I think the town planner should be in that conversation just, just because you're gonna tear up the, the surface from there. Just wanna make sure we don't end up with mud over all the place. But I don't object to the rest of it.
The only concern I would have, you want to try to get the buildings back. Well, there's a twenty day appeal period here anyway. You'll be back what? Is that seven?
So. Uh. So, so the answer to that, the language I submitted can, the buildings back to the end town planner, that's fine. I just, uh, in other words, they can show you what they can do. Like, I understand it'd be a preconstruction conference for any of the, any of the what such things, just that, uh, they wanted to be able to get that, like, for instance, I, I'm, I'm ignorant, I don't. Yeah, but the, you have a shed, I don't know, you need any permits, just to pick it up and hold it.
Well, you said surface, impervious surface, so I assumed you were talking about.
No, I don't, no, I understand.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's what we were about, right?
No, I agree, agreed. So in other words.
I'll just say the town.
Building expect the end town planner, that's fine. We, that, that's fine.
So I will add at the end here, where the applicant may commence preparatory demolition in site work without preconstruction conference with the approval of the building inspector and town planner.
We're working good.
Um, second amended. Or sorry.
Go on.
Anything else, Phil?
Second is amended. All of them, all in favor? Aye, 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 aye.
I can you repeat that, please, for the record? What's the vote?
Four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Well, Mr. Uh, I'll wait behind us.
Karen will address it out. It's just Karen will address it, there's no attendee.
Thank you all, really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, so about, I was eighteen, this coming along. Eighteen year place is coming along very well, the building's built, the site is committed for the ad built. Mister Mars was kind of moving there without seeing a bow, but I I think that if we took a hundred and ten thousand dollars cash charity, I think it's reasonable at this point to release sixty thousand dollars. Just a little cut. He's, yeah, I, I just stopped with him, then he has to go to the building center and get the CBO, et cetera, et cetera. You know, hopefully he does that pretty soon.
I move to return sixty thousand dollars of the charity being held. One hundred and ten thousand for the added eighteen root later project is substantial.
Second, sorry, I said.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
That's good, you leave this down, Karen.
What?
Do you want me to?
I'll take, I'll take it.
So now we have all business, all business and all of the stuff, do we have any? Two, four minutes?
I'm just generating.
Meetings, minutes. Um, I move the minutes of April tenth twenty twenty five.
Twenty five. All in favor, aye, aye.
Okay.
Don't show we spend money.
Did we spend any money, people? Accounting. I move to purchase order two five oh nine four six eight in the amount of one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars for peer review and report for stormwater permit at Henning Harrow House Way.
What do they put in the stormy pool, sir?
Now, purchase order two five oh nine six two three in the amount of four hundred and fourteen dollars, seventy cents legal notices for project at twenty one Central Avenue, seven Marshall Avenue, and seventy two Lionel Avenue. Purchase order two five oh nine six two seven in the amount of four hundred and ten dollars for construction observations and peer review. Report for stormwater permit at ninety five Ellen Street, is Ellen Street ever gonna go away?
No.
Purchase order two five oh nine five eight seven in the amount of sixty thousand dollars for sure, sure reduction for eighteen year place.
There's nothing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Although it comes with more exciting part of the MBTA community update.
So as you all know, we are now complying.
So why that happened?
Yeah. The email came last Friday afternoon to Jim and Jim decided not to call me and let me know.
Oh, how kind of him.
So. But yeah.
That's great.
We are, we are finally done after almost eight months of having stopped in there.
And then we have a recap.
Well, just think our alternative is we can be sued by the attorney general.
That's true. So we have a recap of town giving, I want to tell you that I've received at least ten texts from previous members of the planning board and the select board congratulating us on, oh, you know, you're passing a really effective zoning by law for the town of Cituit. It was nice coming from these really old guys who've been around for a really long time and that you don't really see a lot, but man, they're watching us all the time.
No, they do watch us.
And they watch us and it was nice to hear from people who had positions of power for a long time. How to say it, um, did a good job defending yourself against what's involved and not letting out personal control of meetings.
Shrag.
So.
Big time.
Well, I'm sorry, I wasn't there, so what was the nature of that?
Very similar to all the.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, it was.
It was a little, it was all elevator experience, so pretty much.
And what was really wonderful was she had three amendments. She did number one, that went down to feet. She did number two, and that went down to feet, and when she went to number three, the audience said, no.
A lot of.
No.
It was a long meeting.
It was a long.
It was long.
Actually, it wasn't.
It was.
Kind of.
That's early.
It wasn't bad. It was intense.
It was intense.
Very. And the other big thing was gate school.
Yeah.
And one of the advice about the water to definitely postpone. We took care of that.
And so. So I go all in all, hopefully we won't have us an intense next town meeting. As I said, we've had three big zoning bylaws in the last three years. You take an incredible amount of time, but they're all done now, so we want something a little more simple.
Like what?
Uh, we have something in mind, which I don't know.
It's not simple either.
What is it?
It's not that simple. Wait, we need to, we need to make corrections in the zoning bylaws for building height.
Okay.
And.
For building height?
Yep.
Karen, I keep running against the same.
Wait, we keep running into the same thing and, you know, if you're astute tonight, you notice that it was thirty nine feet to the midpoint of the building. And the maximum is forty feet. However, the building commissioner opined that if you look at the definition in building height, it says in a residential district, so that could be their argument. I don't buy it.
No.
But I'm just telling you, that's, that's the way it's, it's shaken out right now and, you know.
So, so they're saying in a commercial district, forty feet doesn't apply?
That's what it seems like you're saying, even though it says the maximum in the, in the table says the maximum is forty feet. Well, you know.
Every time you go to.
We have to fix it, every time we go to the designer view committee and, you know, next time on this eight, seven ninety nine, eight oh three, you guys really need to ask about the building. Um, you know, it, it comes up as an issue. It, seven ninety nine, um, I don't really think means it, but three forty Gannon, I mean, from the average grade, he is under forty feet.
And is that the standard measurement, average grade?
Average grade, average grade is standard. Well, but so I'm just telling you, it's a, it's a problem that we have to fix, another problem that we've come across recently that I'm not really sure I want to fix it is that in the village business overlay district, which find you, we still have one village business overlay district in the harbor. There really aren't any a lot of design standards, there's no side set backs, there's, you know, and so we had some inquiries lately and my guidance has been use the VPOD where it gives you a standard and then look at the VCN and we'll figure out something reasonable.
Yeah.
But it's, we've got a hope, ultimately the harbor should be a VCN.
Does anybody know what's in the old man remember the building?
No.
I heard it was gonna be a it's like a shared business space.
Yes, it's gotta be business, it was, it was service, service business, it's gotta be the same type.
Something like the collective and most of the.
Yeah. I don't know if that's.
And it has to be a whole major, of course, it's taken.
They're getting there.
And then.
Sales.
Yeah, sales pitch what they are.
I think they make some money, they come back and buy a few studs or whatever.
It actually looks good.
Yeah, I did so.
But it didn't come for a change of use or anything, so therefore.
I, I, again, I cannot say, boy, you have done tremendous job on this stuff, Karen.
Thank you.
Really. You know, Patty's been great.
She does, the, the dog's a lot of work, that's for sure, I can tell you the one, listeners will want to stop as well. So sometimes you have two sets of ears listening, it's a whole lot better. But like I said, D I C is all over us about this building thing and it's architects that willing to help us.
Yeah, I tried, three years ago, another revision of planning board. I wanted the height requirement from here all the way down to the lighthouse. That whole area to be not more than thirty five feet. Boom, not by thieves or any of this other stuff. And Neil Duncan said.
And do that.
But also, um, they've all wanted to do. And look at the size of those shelters.
One just don't want to go away. I do not, we as, do anybody, we as.
I haven't been anywhere.
So we have a putting in development report.
So busy. We remain very busy, we are starting to get uh, at the next meeting, you'll have Great Orde Gannon, you'll have stormwater hearing and you'll have an A D U. And A D U, we're getting a lot of inquiries for A D U's and, you know, we still have a lot of stormwater permits that are administrative ones that I do myself and it keeps like extremely busy in addition to all the big projects.
I'm glad we got that zoning A D U by law. It really, that was so important.
Yep. And like I said, yeah, the right commission that we did, I thought was pretty nice that we.
Yes, the other agreement I found out today, thanks to Karen. Yeah, the, the state has decided that if you take an, yes.
We have another, we have another permit, I told you about that before.
Extension, yeah.
We have another permit extension act that go is in effect from um, January first of twenty twenty three to January first, or January something twenty three to twenty five. If you have a permit that was active in that time, we get a two-year extension.
And what was the purpose of that?
The governor thought we needed it for economic development. Yes.
Oh, because the prices were all, the prices, that's, that makes, the interest rates were higher.
Yes.
Right, that makes sense.
There's some response to what happened during COVID.
So, you know, it's, you know, it's, we know these permanent extension acts are there.
Well, Karen, I hope you have a great vacation.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
Forty one.
I'll make a.
I'll make a motion.
Do.
Yeah, but just go ahead, um.
Like motion to Karen. All in favor?
Aye.